Good evening, everyone. Before entering into the series of different meetings this evening, I'd like to begin with the Pembroke Land Acknowledgement Statement. As we gather today, I would respectfully acknowledge on behalf of council and the community that the city of Pembroke resides on the unceded traditional territory of the Algonquin people. We thank the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. It is with this statement that we honor and respect the Algonquins on whose land we reside. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the public meeting of council for April 4th. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest this evening? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for the approval of this evening's agenda, moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilor Keel. Those in favor, that is carried. The first item of business this evening is a public meeting in respect to Z2-2023-231 Hink Street. This meeting has been called to consider the application under the City of Pembroke Official Plan 2016 to re-designate the property municipally known as 231 Hink Street from a central commercial designation to a residential designation, and further under the City of Pembroke zoning bylaw 2020-05 to rezone said property from central commercial C3 zone to residential type 4-28 to R4-28 zone to allow the apartment building with a nine-dwelling unit with conditions. Clerk, would you please report on how notice was given?
Yes, Your Worship. Notice was given by mail to all owners of property within 120-meter radius of the subject land and was posted on-site on March 1st, 2023.
Thank you. At this time, I ask for a planning report from Mr. Hutton, who is the city planning technician regarding this particular application. Good evening.
Thank you, Your Worship. The Planning Department is recommending the approval of the official plan and zoning bylaw amendments application for 231 Hink Street from a central commercial designation to a residential official plan designation, and from a central commercial C3 zone to a residential type 4-28 zone, subject to the following conditions: that the parking area be paved, that a drainage and snow storage plan to the satisfaction of the city be submitted, that the existing hedge remain as part of the required landscaped buffer, that the refuse enclosure be located near to 231 Hink Street, that setbacks and minimum dwelling unit areas be granted relief, and that required parking be one parking space per dwelling unit. The application is in keeping with the intents of the zoning bylaw official plan and provincial policy statement. The applicant, Jose Belfastcun, has submitted a site plan proposing the redevelopment of his property at 231 Hink Street. The building was originally constructed in 1920. Most recently, it housed a laundromat on the ground floor and eight residential dwelling units on the upper floors. It is currently vacant. Mr. Belfastcun purchased the property in October of 2022, and in his plans for redeveloping the building, wishes to remove the laundromat and replace it with an additional residential dwelling unit in that ground floor space. The proposed redevelopment of the building is only for interior work within the existing building footprint. No residential addition to the building and/or expansion of the building footprint is proposed. The property is currently designated central commercial by the official plan 2016, which states that the uses permitted include apartments over business uses. As such, while the past use of the building as apartment dwelling units over the ground floor laundromat met the intent of the official plan, Mr. Belfastcun's proposed conversion of the ground floor commercial use to a residential use would require an approved official plan amendment. The proposed residential designation would support the full use of the property as residential. The official plan states the change will be gradual where it occurs. This application meets the aims of the official plan to promote efficient and pleasant residential neighborhoods, to promote residential intensification, and to promote residential development and redevelopment where it can be adequately accommodated with municipal water and sewer services and waste disposal. 231 Hink Street is currently zoned central commercial C3 by zoning bylaw 2020-05. The C3 zoning permits, again, dwelling units above ground floor non-residential uses and a laundromat. Therefore, the historical use of the property was permitted. However, in order to permit the ground floor unit to be converted to the proposed residential apartment dwelling unit, the zoning must be amended to a residential type 4-R4 zone. Additionally, 231 Hink Street has existing lot and setback deficiencies for the existing building and lot. Therefore, the proposed residential type 4-28 site-specific zoning is required to grant relief from the following items: minimum lot frontage, minimum frontyard setback, minimum exterior side yard setback, minimum landscaped open space, and minimum dwelling unit area for the existing eight dwelling units. While the existing eight dwelling units are deficient of their respective size requirements, all are pre-existing, the configuration of which likely long predates any zoning bylaw within the city of Pembroke, as the building was again constructed in 1920. The sole newly proposed dwelling unit to replace the laundromat exceeds the minimum dwelling unit area for a bachelor dwelling unit. And as such, this application can be viewed as being in keeping with the intent of the official plan. Further site-specific relief under the proposed R4-28 zoning is being requested to allow for a single parking space per dwelling unit, which, as the proposed redevelopment has nine dwelling units, would set the total required number of spaces to nine spaces. On his submitted site plan, Mr. Belfastcun is showing 10 parking spaces, nine standard, one barrier-free, meaning that he will exceed the proposed requirement by one space. This reduced parking requirement is being requested to allow for more landscaped open space and snow storage area between the parking area and the abutting single detached dwelling at 311 Renfrew Street. This relief is anticipated to have minimal impact on parking capacity as due to the relatively small dwelling unit sizes of the building. It can be assumed that the likelihood of future tenants having more than one vehicle each is relatively small. The aforementioned proposed relief from parking requirements will also allow Mr. Belfastcun to exceed the required three-meter buffer strip, as his proposed site plan shows a buffer strip of 5.27 meters, abutting 311 Renfrew Street, which is the only abutting property with a residential use on lot. The zoning bylaw further states that such a buffer strip shall be plant materials, and as such, the existing hedge along this lot line must be kept and maintained. The provincial policy statement, you will also find that this application is in line with the provincial policy statement. It meets the policy statement's aims for intensification and redevelopment, as this application will provide an additional dwelling unit in that area of the city, simultaneously increasing the mixture of housing density options. Therefore, the Planning Department is recommending the approval of this application for 231 Hink Street from a central commercial official plan designation to a residential designation, and from a C3 zone to an R4-28 zone.
Thank you, Mr. Hutton. Has there been any opposition to the application?
We have only received informational inquiries, Your Worship. The property owners at the abutting residential property have voiced concerns, but we have addressed those concerns. The concerns consisted of snow storage and drainage, and they are present here this evening as well.
If you want, good evening. If you wanted to come forward, state your name and your address, and then provide comment to committee.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ann McVane. My husband, Jim, and I live on the abutting residential property at 311 Renfrew Street. And we attended the Planning Advisory and Adjustment Committee meeting last week, and we spoke to the committee as well about our concerns. And so, when we received the notice, our main concern really was the drainage and snow storage related to being adjacent to our property and what that impact might be, and also the buffer strip. So, when we received the public meeting notice, we did contact the city staff and reviewed that with them, and they made some suggestions, and it's built into their recommendations, which we agree with. We have no problem with the use. We understand the province's initiatives for more housing, and we're happy to see, you know, the property being spruced up. It's good for the neighborhood, and it's good for Pembroke overall. So, provided, you know, the buffer strip and the snow storage and the drainage is dealt with and not going to impact our property and gives us some buffer from the parking, we're pleased with the recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Hutton, was there anyone in support of the application?
Mr. Belfastcun is present tonight on Zoom to represent his application.
Good evening. If you wanted to address the council?
Good evening, council. My name's Jose Belfastcun. This is my wife, Jaclyn Belfastcun. Yeah, no, it's been great working with Owen and everybody in the city. And like we said, the drainage plan, we have a plan being worked with through Glenn, and then once that's submitted, we'll make sure that, you know, it abides by that drainage plan that he's got set by the city.
Thank you. I'd ask for a report from the Chair of the Planning and Development Committee of Council regarding the planning advisory adjustment committee comments regarding this particular application.
Thank you, Your Worship, members of council. The committee was in favor, and of course, we're glad to see residents coming forward. And I believe the committee had some of the same issues with, you know, the drainage, et cetera, and the buffering. And I think those particular issues have been complied with, and I think the neighbors are happy, and the new developer of the property will be happy. We welcome him to our community as he continues to spend money within the Corps to have people working, and we'll move forward. It is a great plan, and thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council in respect to this particular item? Seeing none, if anyone wishes to be notified of council's decision, I'd ask that they please contact Mr. Hutton at City Hall, and I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this particular public meeting. Moved by Councilor Frany, seconded by Councilor Jack, and all those in favor, and that's carried. This particular public meeting is adjourned. The next up this evening is 583 River Road, Malcolm Foley. This meeting has been called to consider the application of the City of Pembroke zoning bylaw 2020-05 to rezone the property municipally known as 583 River Road from a residential R2 type 2 zone to a residential type 3-43, R3-43 zone. I'd ask that the CEO please provide a report on how notice was given.
Yes, Your Worship. Notice was given by mail to all owners of property within 120-meter radius of the subject land and was posted on-site on March 3rd, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Unrah. At this time, I'd entertain a report from Mr. Hutton, the city planning technician, regarding this application.
Thank you, Your Worship. The applicant, Malcolm Foley, has submitted a site plan proposing the construction of a triplex dwelling at 583 River Road, which is currently vacant land. It is presently zoned residential type 2-R2. The R2 zoning allows for up to two main dwelling units in varying forms as permitted uses. As triplex dwelling only becomes a permitted use under the residential type 3 zoning, the applicant is requesting the required amendment. Additionally, based on the submitted site plan, site-specific relief in the form of residential type 3-43 is required to address the following deficiencies: minimum lot area, minimum lot depth, and minimum rear yard setback. All other standard R3 provisions for a triplex dwelling are met or exceeded. Therefore, the application is in keeping with the intent of the zoning bylaw. Further, for the proposed site-specific zoning, relief from driveway width provisions is required. In this case, the standard driveway allowance for 583 River Road would be 20 feet. The applicant is requesting relief of 20 feet from this provision to have a total driveway width of 40 feet in order to accommodate all required parking spaces on the property. While the preferred option for accommodating parking would be to have a single parking area with an access driveway whereby turning on lot would be possible and vehicles could access River Road facing the roadway, this option is not possible due to the configuration of the lot. The lot does not have enough area for a parking lot in the front yard, as the front yard depth is only 20 feet, and the applicant is requesting relief for a reduced rear yard. As such, there would not be enough of a turning radius to create a parking lot in this yard. Three current residential uses on this street, 510 River Road, 110 Irving Street, and 901 River Road, have direct access on to that roadway. The property immediately abutting, 583 River Road, which is 81 Hunter Street, has its driveway off of Hunter Street. So, the location of the proposed driveways for this application would be separated by a minimum distance of 60 feet to the nearest existing driveway, therefore causing no visibility issues. This application is in line with the provincial policy statement 2020 with its aims to support opportunities for intensification and redevelopment, and therefore, the Planning Department is recommending the approval of the zoning bylaw amendment for 583 River Road from a residential type 2 to a residential type 3-43 zone.
Thank you. Mr. Hutton, has there been any opposition to this particular application?
We have received no submissions of opposition, Your Worship, only informational inquiries.
Fair enough. Was there any support for the application?
Yes, the applicant, Malcolm Foley, is present by telephone, if you wish to ask him any questions.
Mr. Foley, I understand that you're participating by telephone. Did you wish to address council in respect to the application?
I'm sorry, Your Worship. It looks like we may have lost the connection with him. He was present at the beginning of the meeting, but it looks like the connection has been lost.
Thank you. I'd ask for a report from the Chair of the Planning and Development Committee of Council regarding the Planning Advisory and Adjustment Committee.
Thank you, Your Worship. The Chair of the committee, Gary Severn, and as well, Councilor across from me here, Councilor Keel, were there, and other members of the committee. We had some pointed questions in regards to this property. Of course, we want to ensure that the integrity of the community is maintained, but they met all the anomalies. There were a number of anomalies in regards to parking, which the committee sort of went through, and I think that the specifications have now been met, and they will move forward again. Another opportunity for a building within the community and additional taxation to make sure that our bottom line is met. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from members of council? Okay, seeing none. If anyone wishes to be notified of council's decision, please contact Mr. Hutton at City Hall, and I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this particular public meeting, moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilor Bressel. Those in favor, that one is adjourned. The last one for this evening for the public meeting of council is regarding 1200 Pembroke Street West being Pembroke West End Plaza. This meeting has been called to consider the application under City of Pembroke zoning bylaw 2020-05 to rezone the property municipally known as 1200 Pembroke Street West from a shopping center commercial C4 zone to a shopping center commercial 1/C41 zone. Mr. CAO, can you please comment on how notice was given?
Yes, Your Worship. Notice was given by mail to all owners of properties within 120-meter radius of the subject land and was posted on-site on March 3rd, 2023.
Thank you. Ms. Soria, as the planner for the city of Pembroke, would you please provide a report regarding this application?
Good evening. An application for rezoning to permit indoor storage units to be contained within the West End Mall at 1200 Pembroke Street West has been received. The applicant would like to rezone the property to allow for 270 storage units within the existing mall building. Thirty-five thousand square feet of the middle portion of the mall would be dedicated to the self-storage units if approved. The owners of the mall are trying to use vacant floor space that has become vacant over the years and has become very difficult to rent. The application does not propose any additional buildings or exterior self-storage units. They would all be located within the mall building. There would be a change to the front of the mall building, where there would be a garage door to allow customers to drive into the facility to store or pick up their belongings. There would also be three self-storage units located at the rear of the building that would have direct access to the building from the rear yard. Again, all units would be located within the existing building. The official plan designates the property as shopping center commercial, and this designation encourages an integrated mix of commercial, retail, and business uses. The use of storage units at 1200 Pembroke Street West can be classified as commercial. There is no emissions or outdoor storage, and no manufacturing and/or assembly of goods. Therefore, the proposed use of storage units would be compatible in the area and meet the intent of the official plan. In regards to the zoning, the existing mall building meets the lot area, frontage depth, and setback requirements, as well as relief was granted in 1994 to permit a reduced exterior side yard and a reduced rear yard buffer strip. The owners of the mall have been trying to redefine the mall from a traditional use to uses that will help the mall financially. Stores such as Dollarama, The Brick, and PV Mart all now have direct access from the parking lot. The city zoning bylaw defines this shopping center as a group of commercial, retail, institutional, and business establishments, planned, developed, owned, and managed as a unit, having off-street parking and loading provided on the same lot. The zoning bylaw defines a self-storage facility as a commercial building or part of a building wherein items are stored in separate secured storage areas or lockers, which are generally accessible by means of individual loading doors. In regards to parking, the zoning bylaw requires .75 parking spaces per rentable storage unit. Based on a similar rezoning a couple of years ago, council felt that the parking requirements to be excessive and reduce the amount of parking so that to that, sorry, of surrounding municipalities' parking requirements for self-storage units. Both Pittawawa and Renfrew zoning bylaws require one parking space per 120 square meters of non-residential floor area. Therefore, for 270 storage units under the city's present zoning bylaw would require 203 parking spaces. And upon reviewing other municipal parking lots, parking requirements, it would appear Pembroke has the highest parking requirement for storage units. This use does not typically generate a need for parking. Therefore, if the Pittawawa and Renfrew parking requirements were used, then only 28 parking spaces would be required for this use, which seems much more reasonable. Further, the parking requirements for a shopping center are five parking spaces per 100 square meters. The retail parking requirements for 35,000 square feet would be 163 parking spaces, which are there now. So, there's still 163 parking spaces available for this 35,000 square feet of space. Thus, the parking requirements are met. Based on the fact that the storage units will be located within the mall, this use would be compatible in the existing area, and it will meet the provincial policy statement. So, the Planning Department is recommending its approval with reduced parking requirements, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Soria. Was there any opposition to this application?
There were several informational inquiries, and the inquiries were, would the self-storage units be located on the vacant piece of land beside the mall? And no, they won't. They would be, once they found out that they would be located within the mall building itself, they were satisfied with the application.
And was there anyone in support of this application?
The applicant, Mr. James Gray, I believe, is on Zoom this evening.
Hello, Mr. Gray. If you wish to address council in respect to your application? You're still muted, Mr. Gray.
Okay, is that, is that better?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yeah, no, I think I have it correct. Yeah? Yeah?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gray. I'd ask for a report from the Chair of Planning Development Committee of Council regarding the Planning Advisory and Adjustment Committee comments. Councillor Jackno.
Thank you, your worship, and members of council. This came before the planning committee, the planning advisory committee earlier, and you know, for the rezoning from shopping center commercial C four to shopping center commercial I dash C four dash one, I believe is the correct term. And I believe that the mall has been facing some challenges for a few years. They've worked very hard to maintain the integrity of the mall in the west end of Pembroke, which we all appreciate. And rather than having the, that particular area perhaps torn down and a loss of tax dollars to us, the owners have come up with an ingenious plan to have storage units within the, within the shopping center area itself, which will provide much-needed use for people within the area. And as our area continues to grow, your worship, with new housing and people moving in, there's a demand and a need for storage. The owner, the representative of the mall actually ensured us that there will be a person on duty to ensure that, you know, things go smoothly. And I don't think there was any, anybody really objecting to the, to the application itself. We have more than adequate parking, from my understanding, for that area, and we're glad to see that this is moving forward. The interior of the mall has been rejigged a little bit. If you haven't been there, you may want to take a look yourself and see how it's been, you know, they've taken some of the clients that have been there for a number of years and put them into another footprint, but yet within the mall area, which still attracts people. So I think this will be a wonderful new addition to this part of our community, and we thank the owners for their foresight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Jackno. Is there any questions from members of council? Seeing none. If anyone wishes to be notified of council's decision, please contact Ms. Sorio at City Hall, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn this particular public meeting, moved by councillor Purcell, seconded by councillor Keel. Those in favor, that's carried, and I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this public meeting of council for April fourth. I have councillor Keel, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Those in favor, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Development Committee to order. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the next order of business. The approval and amendment or amendment of the meeting agenda. Are there any additions? Moved by, moved by, moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Lefernier. Those in favor? All in favor? Thank you. The approval of the minutes of the Planning and Development Committee of March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, having been circulated and read. Were there any errors or omissions? If not, I need mover. Moved by councillor Keel, seconded by councillor Plummer. Those in favor? Against? Carry. Thank you. Any business arising from the minutes? Seeing none. Presentations and delegations. Renfrew Wolves jersey presentation, Mr. Onro. What is this all about, Mr. Onro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd like to invite Mayor Sidney from the town of Pittawawa, or, whoa. Town of Renfrew, and he can explain why he's here.
Thank you, Mr. Onro. That'll cost you five dollars in the bucket for the mistake. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Sidney. Mayor Sidney from the wonderful town of Renfrew, has all that growth taking place.
Thank you very much.
And the new highway coming through. Welcome to the City of Pembroke.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and mayor and council for this delightful evening on my end, I guess would be the way to put it. Back when county council was being sworn in, I had a conversation with your mayor saying, you know, there's this thing called the Battle of the Valley between the junior A team in Renfrew and the junior B, the junior A team here in Pembroke. And we kind of put this wager together, saying that whoever wins the best out of the five series, the other city mayor, deputy mayor, and CAO agree to wear the team's jersey of the other municipality. And I am here to gratefully express the fact that Renfrew did win. And I am here to present three jerseys for the mayor, deputy mayor, and CAO to wear during tonight's meeting, which we will then pick up on Thursday. So if I could have mayor, deputy mayor, and CAO come forward, please?
Your worship, Deputy Mayor, CAO, and as Sylvester would say in the cartoon, the shame of it.
Yeah. Hopefully that, you know, if we do this next year, it might be different, and you might, you might be coming to Renfrew, but.
Hopefully, Mr. Chair, we, I think, can do it.
Yeah, that's what I'm, like, uh.
That's right.
Well, certainly a friendly wager never hurt anyone, and it's always nice to have the camaraderie between the town of Renfrew and the city's members. I'm just really trying to capture us for podcasting. Yeah. Got it? Yeah.
Right. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. All right, much.
Don't like shit.
Yeah. I don't like shit. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Sidney. Thank you for coming. He is gone, you can take them off.
Thank you, everyone.
It's good to have that local flavor and camaraderie. Next item of business, item seven, new business relief from building permit fees, County of Renfrew. Who's reporting on that one?
Oh, county of homelessness.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yes, sorry, I didn't have that on here. Please come forward. I'm sorry, I, here, I skipped Housing and Homelessness Programs, County of Renfrew. Welcome. Excuse me for my faux pas. That's five dollars in the bucket for me, too. Mr. Kelly, welcome. Welcome, Ms. Lapine. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you, Chair, Mayor, and members of council. Good to see you. It's a bit of a county day here at the City of Pembroke, which is fine. We're okay with that. It's nice to be in your house once in a while. It's quite often we, we come down here to see staff, but not often we get to see council. So it's really nice to see you again. Thank you. I'd like to point out again, thank you to councillors Lefernier and Jackno and Purcell now for, for sitting on our, our joint committees that we have with Health and Community Services. So it's nice to see you again here. Also, I'm wearing the colors, so to speak, of VTAC, and wanted to thank the city for all your support over the last three years now. It was March thirtieth, three years ago, the state of emergency was declared, so thankfully we've moved through that phase, but VTAC will be around now with permanent funding, as we've heard from MPP Akabuski, so we're anxious to, to keep rolling that out for our residents, your residents, and just the whole region. So thank you for your support over that. But we're here to talk about housing and, and the homelessness. So I have two of my colleagues here with me, and they'll introduce themselves when they, when they have a chance to speak. But as you know, we've got, we've got issues. We've got issues across the province, we've got issues locally, and we've got issues specifically in eastern Ontario. So let me speak about eastern Ontario first. The Warden sits on the Wardens Caucus, the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. And right now, we're working on a business plan and business study that will be eventually a business case, moving to the province on how to build seven thousand units in seven years. So we've, we've met at Roma, the Roma Conference, the AMO Conference, and other, other meetings we've had with senior-level ministers, hoping to convince them that we have a, we will have a plan in place for increasing the rental unit stock across eastern Ontario, and we're going to play a role in that. Locally, we went through our strategic plan early this year and have identified that attainable housing and infrastructure is, is going to play a role in how we, we look at things moving forward. So there's a bit of a conversation about the, the definition of attainable and affordable. We deal a lot in both, and Laura will speak to that as well. But attainable, I think, is what, what we heard actually today from some of these planning files, is those private developers who are looking to create rental units for people in the, in the, in the general public. And Ms. Lapine deals a lot with affordable housing and, and dealing with the social service side of things and, and placing people into that. Mr. Jason Davis, of course, is our Director of Development and Property, who is now working on the bricks and mortar side of things with, with the housing portfolio, and will be speaking more to what's going on in the City of Pembroke. But Laura's got a bit of a, of a slide deck, I think she wants to walk through. So with that, all with you, Chair, with your permission, Chair, I'll turn it over to Ms.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us and through you, Chair, to council. I have a presentation that is on your, your screen there, and I just kind of want to talk a little bit about our housing. But maybe I can kind of tell you a little bit about myself. My name is Laura Lapine, I'm the Director of Community Services, and within my portfolio, I oversee community housing, the Ontario Works Program, which is social or financial assistance and employment assistance, and also our childcare and early-years programs. And through that, we have a lot of different programs, and I'm going to focus tonight on housing. So in Renfrew County, in Renfrew County, we have what's called the Renfrew County Housing Corporation. And the Renfrew County Housing Corporation owns and manages a thousand-and-twenty residential units throughout the county of Renfrew, and these are all designated as rent geared to income. These units are in all different parts of the county, and I do have a list of our locations, but we have locations in Armpire, Renfrew, Barry's Bay, Beachburg, Cobden, Deep River, Eganville, Palmer Rapids, and the City of Pembroke. And in the City of Pembroke, we have three-hundred-and-fifty-one units alone in the city, and it's combined with apartments. We have some rural housing, duplexes, single homes, so we have quite a mix in the City of Pembroke. But in terms of housing programs, there's a lot more to housing than just rent geared to income housing. And meeting the needs of people who are seeking what's called affordable housing or housing they can afford are two different things. So under the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, we work with an affordable housing definition that speaks to whatever the local rent amount is, which is set by Canada Mortgage and Housing, eighty percent of that amount would be considered affordable. Now, that's, that's one definition, and as my colleague Craig has mentioned, there are different definitions out there. Anything that is funded through the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, we have to follow their definition of affordable. We have, in addition to rent geared to income housing, which I'm sure many of you have heard about, that is the Housing Waitlist Program that exists. You need to know that that waitlist is, is quite intense. We have quite a few people on that waitlist. At any given time, we are looking at anywhere from a five-to-ten-year wait period for homes. And part of that is because the highest demand is for one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, and those are, are the least available units. So certainly, people can be on a waitlist for a long time looking for rent geared to income housing. And if that's all we had, then that would be a very difficult situation for everybody, but we do have other supports out there. And I want to talk about some of our additional housing programs. We have what's known as a rent supplement private market, RGI. So what that means is that we have entered into agreements with private landlords throughout the County of Renfrew to provide rent geared to income housing. So the tenant is assessed through Renfrew County Housing Corporation, they meet the eligibility, and their rent is set based on their financial situation. We, through Renfrew County Housing, will pay the difference between what that rent amount is and what the landlord charges. So that's a rent supplement program, and that program right now is serving between thirty and forty households. It's not a large number, but we are looking to increase that in the next few months to year. This is a program that doesn't have an end date, per se, as long as somebody still qualifies for, or still resides in that home, they are still eligible for the rent geared to income program. We have something known as Homelessness Prevention Program. That's a new name for a program that has been around for a few years. You may have heard of what was called in the past the CHIPI Program, which stood for the Consolidated Homelessness Prevention Program. Missing the I. Initiative, thank you. And that rolled out several years ago, and it was renamed last year to Homelessness Prevention Program. And for some of you in this room, that might be very confusing, because we've already had a homelessness prevention program, and now we've got a provincial homelessness prevention program. But we have, we have to use this new title, and in that program, we have something known as Strong Communities Rent Subsidy. And again, it's very similar to the rent supplement program. These are contracts with, or agreements with private landlords to provide rent geared to income housing. So the same approach applies. When somebody off the waitlist is granted into that unit, then, you know, the coverage between what the mark, the rent charged and what that person should pay is covered. Right now, we're looking at about eighteen to twenty households, and we, we are going to definitely be increasing that in the next year. We also have, through the same homelessness prevention program, something called a rent allowance program. The rent allowance program is a little different. This is a monthly rent supplement that is paid to the landlord on behalf of a household in need of rental assistance. So it's a fixed amount, and it can be between two-hundred-and-seventy-five a month to three-hundred-and-seventy-five a month, depending on the family composition. And that is also going to be increasing the numbers over the next little, I would say, next few months. We're right now serving between a hundred-and-fifty and a hundred-and-sixty households with that program. Then we have what's known as the Canada-Ontario Housing Benefit. This is relatively new. It's been around for a few years. The acronym is COB, and this is a different program. This is initially rolled out through the Renfrew County Housing Corporation and our Community Housing Department, but after somebody has been approved, it is actually taken over by the Ministry of Finance, and the relationship between the tenant is with the Ministry of Finance. And this is a program where somebody would qualify for a portable housing benefit. It's a benefit that would go with the tenant as opposed to the unit. So if somebody was granted a portable house, or a Canada housing benefit, they would receive a certain amount per month, and whether they lived in the City of Pembroke or moved into the town of Armpire or decided to relocate to the City of Toronto, that housing benefit goes with them. So it's different than the other programs. We also have something known as Emergency Minor Home Repair, and this is a grant program. It's a one-time assistance that can be provided to low-income homeowners for essential home repairs to support safe housing and housing retention. And this is really for emergency situations, and really anything that compromises health and safety of somebody remaining in their home would be seen as an emergency minor home repair. For example, a furnace has, has died and needs to be replaced, a roof has significant damage, and as long as the cost can come within the seventy-five-hundred dollars, then I would encourage anybody to apply to that program. And the numbers depend on, on the amount of funding, and we're relooking at where that's going to be in the next little while. Also in there is we have a program called Ontario Renovates. So I know there's a lot of programs that will sound similar, but they are somewhat different, and this, this- particular program is a forgivable loan of up to $10,000 for essential household repairs, and an additional grant of $3,500 can be provided for accessibility upgrades. And this is often used throughout County Renfrew residents for window replacements, installing a ramp, doors, certainly look at energy efficiencies and and making that home more long-term for people. It's about keeping people in their homes as much as we can. If we go to the next slide, I just wanted to put this map up. It's very hard to see, but the red, this is the city of Pembroke, and this denotes the housing that we have in the city of Pembroke, just so you can see it in a in a visual. So in terms of our housing programs, that's what we have on offer right now. Anybody who is interested in being considered for rent geared to income housing or any of those programs would need to reach out either through our County of Renfrew website. We do have quite a few applications available, so people can complete applications online. They can call our office. We have a variety of ways to assist people in getting applications forward. All of the programs are application-based, but we also have staff who will assist with anything that they need in terms of getting their application and getting the approval process moving forward. We also have staff who will work with anybody who is on our waitlist for rent geared to income housing. So often, what happens, you know, if you're waiting for a few years, you're probably needing some communication. So it's not uncommon for people to check in to see where they are on the waitlist. The challenge with providing information on where somebody is on a waitlist is that we can't give an exact time period. We have one special priority category under rent geared to income housing, under Renfrew County Housing. What that means is that we have designated a priority housing, meaning somebody would move up the waitlist because it's a chronological waitlist, if they are a victim of violence. And that is the criteria that is currently in place. And certainly, people who meet that criteria will move ahead of other people on the waitlist. So sometimes, it's very difficult to give a really good answer as to how far somebody is on a waitlist or how long. We can give rough estimates. So during the time period that somebody is on that waitlist, we're going to offer some of these other programs to them because it may be more of a benefit to them to be in a rent supplement program or a rental allowance program or the Canada-Ontario Housing Benefit. It's nice to have options to provide to people. So those are our housing programs. Now, if we move on, we now have our homelessness programs. And I think it's very important, as Craig spoke to you, that, you know, we're very aware that there's a homelessness issue. It's something that is not limited to the county or Ontario or Canada or even North America. It is definitely something that's going on everywhere, and definitely, we're all impacted. We certainly see that larger centers have a greater impact than maybe smaller centers because of visibility. And through the county, we have funding through the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing to help with some of the issues around homelessness. And I want to talk to you a little bit about that because I know that Pembroke is definitely facing homelessness, and we've certainly provide a lot of support to people in the city of Pembroke as well as the County of Renfrew in terms of assisting people to get housed and to have some emergency housing while they're working on a plan to have long-term sustainable housing. We have what's called emergency supports, and this is financial assistance for anybody who is currently in a housing situation where they're at risk of becoming homeless. So somebody whose rent is now becoming very difficult to afford, we do have assistance, financial assistance for that. It's definitely something that people have been utilizing, certainly over the pandemic, when there was a freeze on evictions. Some people got behind on their rent, or there was a reduction in income. And then when the ability to start moving forward on evictions with private landlords, for example, we saw a lot more people come through saying that, you know, they now have high rent arrears, and if they don't pay their rent, they're going to be evicted. So we definitely assist anybody low-income in in providing assistance with that. We work with all of our applicants in terms of looking at long-term financial viability so that we ensure that people are, you know, making their their bill payments so they can remain housed. And this also applies for energy arrears as well. So if somebody's behind in their hydro or their Enbridge, or any of their important, you know, anything that will keep them housed or anything that could potentially put them at risk of being housed, we will definitely consider. And we have as well a last month's rent deposit program so that if somebody is moving to affordable housing, something they can afford, and they need some assistance, that's almost always required in rental situations, a first and last month's rent, we can assist with that as well. We also have a fair bit of activity in our emergency placement, which is where we utilize local hotels and motels to provide assistance for somebody who's in a situation where they have nowhere to stay. And this is a much bigger situation in terms of, you know, long-term viability. So we we provide emergency hotel. We certainly will make sure that they have access to that hotel or motel and access to meals and food. But this is a very short-term, very time-limited program. It is a very costly program, so we have to work very quickly with each and every person who we're serving in this program to try to find some long-term housing solutions for them. Hopefully, we'll work closely with the caseworker and be involved with our item known as Build for Zero Canada or Renfrew County, which is something that I'll speak about in a second. We also have our after-hours homelessness support. After-hours phone number to provide assistance to anybody who finds themselves in a situation between the from 4:00 until 8:00 p.m. And what that means is that anybody who is in that situation who needs emergency housing, thank you, who needs emergency housing overnight can call this number. And we have a 15-minute guaranteed return callback time where we will connect that person to a local facility. Again, we have motels in all of our communities, and we'll assist getting that person or their family to a motel for the night, and then we'll speak to them in the morning once they have been settled and get, you know, connected to a lot of supports that we have through our program. And some of those, you know, our after-hour support program, and and I want to just be clear, we we do that during the day as well. We have full staff, you know, on between the hours of 8:00 and 4:00 who take those calls, and we have dedicated staff who will respond to anybody who's in that situation. But it's the the time between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m. that if somebody is in a situation and they didn't didn't know or didn't reach out during business hours, we don't want them to be on their own. And we've been averaging about 10 calls per month in the last little while. Certainly, there were a lot more calls during the pandemic, but we've certainly seen a great decrease. And actually, we went from an average of 23 calls a month to 10 calls a month in the last last few months. So that that's definitely something we've noticed. We also have an initiative known as Build for Zero Renfrew County. And Build for Zero Canada is an initiative where they have a goal to end homelessness. And we have signed on with Renfrew County, and this is actually a very good thing because anybody who is consisting of or anybody who's involved with our Build for Zero Renfrew County has an opportunity to be very involved with our program. So it is our goal to enroll people who need assistance with homelessness supports to be connected to this program. We have a table. It it sounds a little bit like a situational table that the OPP and police offer, but this is a different kind of table where we bring some of the key players in homelessness in Renfrew County. So that would be the County of Renfrew, The Grind, Pembroke, Mental Health Services of Renfrew County, and Renfrew County Safe Shelter for Youth. And we come together and we talk about the clients that we're serving and how can we best serve them. We know that solving homelessness is not just a matter of a motel for the night. Sometimes, there's other issues that we need to address, and we need to work collaboratively with our community partners. But we all need to work together to help assist people. And part of this Build for Zero Renfrew County is that we have the opportunity to track how things are going and track outcomes because it is definitely something that we know will take a period of time in terms of getting somebody to the the home that's going to be a stable home for, you know, a chunk of time. Precariously housed people are very much on our radar, and these are people who used to be known as couch surfers or people who can stay for a night here or there. And, you know, while they may not be as visible as somebody who is, you know, out on the street, people who are precariously housed need to have long-term housing solutions as well. So we're working with a large number of people right now, and we're hopeful that over time, we're going to see great success in helping them get the supports that they need. And those supports could be mental health supports, it could be addiction supports, it could be it's endless what kind of supports they may need. And, you know, helping them get a home is not the only thing that will help them succeed. So it's a collaborative effort. And of course, you know, one of the things that I think we're very excited about is we're launching our first build that the County of Renfrew has undertaken since housing came to the County of Renfrew. And I'm actually going to hand the speaker over to my colleague Jason, who will tell you a little bit more about it. But we're very excited to have this venture actually starting in the city of Pembroke, which is really good news all around. So thank you, and I'll pass it over to Jason.
Very good. Welcome, Jason. Go ahead.
Do the shuffle.
Thank you, Chair, your worship and council member. So my name is Jason Davis. I am the Director of the Development and Property Department. And Craig mentioned that we are we our portfolio was looking after the bricks and mortar of the Renfrew County Housing Corporation assets. As Laura mentioned, we have a little over 1,000 units. You can imagine, as Laura again mentioned, that they're quite dated. The maintenance of these units are quite expensive. But more importantly and more excitedly, I'm going to announce that or announce that County Council approved the new development in the city of Pembroke for eight-unit, 12-bedroom complex at the corner of Lee and Douglas. By no means, this was a quick decision. I'm looking back at the notes before I became the Director. It started in 2021, I think, with Craig Kelly, and it's taken this long to get to where we are, where we can hopefully have shovels in the ground beginning in May. The expectation to have this completed before the year end is is there. But again, there's always supply chain issues, even as recently as last month. Supply chain issues for electronic or electrical transformer. We were notified that could take up to six months, but working with Ottawa Power Generation Group that they did find us a transformer, which is a good news story. What you'll see also, and maybe in your package or what you'll see in social media, this is an expensive build for these eight units, 12 bedrooms, a little over $3.1 million for the construction. And that's why you have in front of you today, you have a request from us if you could waive some of your fees associated with this with this build. Every dollar that that we don't have to spend is goes towards these housing units. I think this is a good news story, absolutely. Again, a first build in over 30-plus years for Renfrew County to add units to this portfolio benefits everyone. And before I stop on the Lee and Douglas build, though, be aware that we're also rebuilding a single unit into a duplex on 202 Cecil Street, just down the road from Lee and Douglas. So I I think what you'll see in the future at at least at my my portfolio and Laura's portfolio, you'll see the expansion, I do believe, of Renfrew County Housing Corporation assets moving forward. We've been at a status quo for a number of years, decades, with the influx of funds from the federal federal and provincial governments. We're going to expand that. So again, a good news story. And then thank you for having me.
Questions of council to our delegation. Counselor Plummer, your worship. Counselor Keel.
Well, first of all, thank you for coming in and keeping us informed. I think it's important to know the county's stance on some things and what programs are available, certainly for people. Question, I definitely had a couple of great programs available, and talks about a lot of the clients, how they can get in touch with you. How does a say you had a developer that wanted to get in touch with you to get in on some of those programs where you said the rent supply program or the homelessness prevention program? How would a how would a developer, you know, come to you and say, hey, I have some units or I'm interested in a program? How would they contact you or who would be their contact?
Thank you. Sorry. Through you, Chair to council, I just want to mention that you can certainly reach out to myself or Jason. We have, at this point in time, we are fully subscribed with our rent supplement program, but with our plan to open up some more spaces, we will be looking for more private landlords who are willing to participate. So we may put out a call publicly, but certainly, if anybody is wanting to contact us, we can certainly start that conversation and get things going.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair, if I could just address maybe a little bit, thank you, that I think it's an opportunity. We've heard, I think you've heard from, oh, my gosh, Ish Talhammer and folks who have made a presentation. I can't remember the name of their alliance. Anyway, there are there are different methodologies to housing. Private is obviously one of them. Co-op housing, nonprofit housing. I think we've encouraged and we've gone out to encourage groups to form, form themselves into an official group so they can access funds that we're going to have funneled through us from the province. We can't always incentivize private developers. They haven't made that allowance yet from the province and federal funding. But they can, we can incentivize nonprofits and cooperatives. And if you look at housing models that have been successful, those two models have been very successful across across North America. So again, when we've had these conversations with those groups that come forward, we said, please start to form your groups and and be ready. Because when the when the puck drops, I got to do that because you've got a hockey shirt on. When the puck drops, you better be ready to shoot. Premier Ford, was it today? Gosh, that was just today. Premier Ford announced another $202 million in in funding. And we expect to 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 hear more about that in the coming weeks. But the projects have to be shovel-ready because they'll they'll announce dollars and say, in two months, you better have a plan. And and that's what we're trying to get ahead of this. But as Jason said, we've been working on this one plan for two years. So that's, you know, and we don't, we're trying to throw away all our red tape to get these projects done, and we're still stuck in that red tape thing. So anyway, I just wanted to answer that in terms of how to incentivize developers, I think, is what you're suggesting, and we're trying to get there with you.
Your worship, Counselor LeFernier, Counselor Keel, Counselor Fernier, and then Counselor Purcell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to begin by thanking the three of you for coming this evening. I can think back to former Mayor Lemay at the on the last term, towards the end of the term, calling a meeting with the the warden, yourself. There was representation from The Grind and others, the OPP and so forth. And it wasn't until then that basically I got an education in terms of this whole concept. And so it's important, I believe, for the three of you to come this evening. And I would be asking if you can make your slide deck available because so we're not only on YouTube, we have the media here from IFM, The Observer, so we have your TV. So we have all of this at our fingertips to get the message out in terms of how it is that housing and homelessness is being addressed in the county. But to our concern is also the the city of Pembroke. So I really appreciate that the the three of you are coming this evening because it's educating us, which is important, but it's educating the the public at large. I found it very interesting, again, as was done at that particular meeting under this Build for Zero, recognizing the the valued contribution of The Grind, as well as recognizing the issues that the city of Pembroke has faced, and hence, what this council is faced with in terms of addressing those particular issues. So if if possible, if you could make the slide deck available because I'm sure that the media would want to be able to access that as as well. And it's just to further educate people that people aren't sitting on their on their hands. There is efforts made to try and address things. And we, as a council, recognize monies that we advance then to the 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 County of Renfrew and what it is that's being gained in return. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Counselor Keel, LeFernier, and then Purcell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions, but I'll start with the first one and let the rest of council go around at a time. So there's there's a unit on Cecil that I think I think it's currently a one unit. We're turning that into a two unit, and I think the media reported that was about 500 and some thousand. Then there's an eight unit that's just over 3 million. Have we considered at all purchasing existing apartment buildings? And I say that in my other life as a real estate lawyer. I had a client last year sell three buildings in the east end of Pembroke for, I think, 4.2 million, but that was 30-some units. So cost-wise, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just wondering if if building new units is great, and I'm glad there's money money for that. But I'm just wondering if there's other ways that we can we can look at things.
Would like to respond to that, C.A.R.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, the point isn't lost on us, how expensive this build is. And although we went through a competitive bidding process, that's that's how we do things, obviously, like you. So we, it's a competitive bid. In terms of a purchase, it creates it creates a host of other issues. And trust me, these two know more than well that that I'm surfing the realtor sites, looking for apartment buildings at any given time, or hotels that are for sale or anything else that happens that that may happen. And those funds have been used in other communities for that. Our strategy doesn't suggest that at the moment. We are, we have, up until now, actually, just been concentrating We are, we have, up until now, actually just been concentrating with keeping the lights on and fixing move-in and move-outs. When tenants move in and move out, often there's a lot of damage, and we have to repair them and all of our costs of going towards that. This was a bit beyond our, our scope in the last few years, so again, this is something we haven't ever done, is build something on our own. Now, we've partnered with Petawawa Housing Corporation and in our prior, another build there too, and so. However, to hit your point more dead-on, buying someone's older stock has bigger issues than building new. And we've, we've, we've discovered that as buyers, if you will, of the provincial stock of housing, right? You are dealing with older stock that we now know have two-by-four walls, insufficient insulation, bad roofs. So, while buying something that may be a new apartment would be great, the developers would have to deal with the government, and I'll be clear, it's very hard to deal with us, because we have to go through our own committees and councils and get monies and spend tax dollars on a private development to purchase somebody's private apartment building. So, not unheard of, not unthought of, it's just the right opportunity hasn't presented itself to us yet. When we have the funding, we have seen the right opportunities present themselves, but we don't have the funding. It's not often we have a gift of, of two or three million dollars from the province that we're able to use, but, but our ears and eyes are always wide open to these opportunities.
Sure. If I can, Laura's going to add to it.
Through you, Chair. If I may, I also want to add that the province was really encouraging us to have a contribution towards this, the county, because it will be, the County of Renfrew is going to build this, and then we're going to transfer it to Renfrew County Housing Corporation as part of their portfolio. And one of the incentives that we had, which was cost-saving, is the, the price of the land. We're utilizing land that the county, or sorry, the Renfrew County Housing Corporation already owns, and that in itself is a significant contribution, and it demonstrates our investment as well. So, I just wanted to add that to what Craig has added, because that's an important piece at the ministry level. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keel, Counselor Fernier, Counselor Purcell.
Thank you for the presentation. Okay. The hotel motel, they can only stay there a few days, am I correct? Okay. So, when someone stays at the motel for a few days and they're still homeless, I know the past practice sometimes was to send them to Ottawa, because there are shelters there. That's still practice, correct? Kind of, yeah. I do know somebody that, that happened to about a month ago. It's so sad, and I, you know, I feel for you and your staff, because I'm sure you see this all the time, and we're sending our individuals away. Have we ever kept statistics that indicates what percentage of these individuals that are homeless or on the verge of homelessness to tell us what percentage are suffering from mental health or addiction, and which are just facing financial hardships through, you know, employment? And have we ever kept the stats on that? Because I think really there's another problem here.
Go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Chair, to council, I'd like to mention that the situation that you have referred to is the very end situation. So, you know, somebody staying in motel for a night or two, so it's usually one night during the week. Of course, on the weekend, it's a little longer, because, you know, we need, our goal is when that person gets up in the morning and is ready to check out that they come to our office or we come to them, whatever works, like we find a meeting place and we start the process of trying to determine how do we work in this situation? What can we do? And there are times where it, whatever is, whatever the options are is not going to work. The shelters in Ottawa are full as well, but they have access to some additional resources that large cities have. So, that can be an option. You know, if somebody was to say, you know, I'm, I've got a family member who lives in Carlton Place, and, you know, if I could get a ride there, I'll go there, we happily assist. We'll, you know, get things connected, but sometimes those options aren't available. We have some people where there's not a motel in Renfrew County that will, will allow them, that happens as well. Maybe some past behavioral issues or some other stuff. There may be other things that make it really difficult to keep somebody housed any amount of time here, and it's not, it's not just put them on a bus and, and get them to the shelter. We actually try to connect with services so that there is a service plan when they arrive. But in terms of collecting data, that's what Build for Zero is about. The Build for Zero Renfrew County is a data collecting process as well. It's very robust. We just received recognition from Build for Zero Canada that our data is considered clean and is, is moved to the next level. And I know from a data perspective, that means everything to us, because we're able to capture some very key elements that normally are not captured. When somebody calls between the hours of 4:00 and 8:00 p.m., we're not going into case management at that time. We're, we're determining, are you somebody who needs a place? Yes, you do. We have a list of motels, hotels, we have some quick movement, and then the next day, that's when we start any deep dive into further work. Sometimes that person doesn't follow through, we don't see them again. So, we really need to have that deep dive of information, and that's what Build for Zero is about, as well as, you know, case conferencing on the best plan of care.
Final question. I sit on the County Health Committee, but I do not sit on the Housing or the Social Committee, so I'm not sure that this has even come up at county, at the county level. But has there ever been any discussion? Because as we know, the homeless individuals in the city that are also suffering from mental health are not all from the city of Pembroke. They are from the surrounding municipalities. Has there ever been discussion as to how we can, all of us, set up some type of regional facility where these individuals can go and live and be treated? Has there ever that discussion? Because I have it with many individuals privately, saying, you know, the entire region needs some kind of facility. We just, you know, we can't put them on a bus and say, well, they have all those services in the city, when they want to stay closer to their home. So, has that discussion ever come up?
Go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Chair, to council. I would say that that is a conversation with Ministry of Health. Ministry of Health would take care, they're, they're the funders of any kind of counseling services and health-related services. So, from our perspective, we're very involved with different ministry tables, and we've certainly, from the Ministry Community and Children Community and Social Services, Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and Ministry of Education, children's programs, we have certainly met with ministers, deputy ministers, directors, and talked about the importance of having health at the table at this point in time. We know there's lots of advocacy work going on, Association of Municipalities of Ontario, lots of different groups are encouraging those conversations. I believe that health is very busy right now with a lot of health-related issues that, that they may not have at this time opportunity to sit with us, but it is part of the plan to have health be part of these conversations. As you probably know, homelessness is discussed in so many different places, and the link to mental health and addictions comes up in many of those conversations. So, it is known to us in the field that is definitely an important piece. However, those conversations in terms of opening a center, regional or such, would be with the Ministry of Health and, and not through us at this point in time.
Purcell? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, but, but to add, in terms of shelters, like to, to invest in a shelter, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing is not supporting the building of new shelters. Shelters and congregate settings are not considered ideal. Studies have proven that it is not the best solution when you're dealing with homelessness, that programs that give people choices, some of the programs that we have up there tend to have greater success. But owning and operating a shelter is, there's a significant cost in the operations, and at this point in time, we have no funding through the County of Renfrew. Certainly, if a municipality wanted to take on that cost, I'm, I'm sure that could be done, but it certainly wouldn't be through the County of Renfrew. We have no funding for that.
Final comment, Counselor Fernier?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. And the forces behind VTAC, I mean, that was something to commend. So, I would just hope that someday something would be done on the other side of the coin for mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernier. Counselor Purcell, and then Deputy Mayor Abdallah.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation today. I echo, you know, Counselor LeFernier's concerns. City of Pembroke, you know, we're a hub. We're a hub for services and supports. So, we have mental health supports, we have addiction supports, and we have our fair share in terms of housing issues. I kind of echo, you know, the same sentiment, is that we need to find, you know, supportive or assistive temporary housing, and we need the county to be part of that solution for the city of Pembroke. That being said, the Build to Zero Renfrew County, I know members on that committee, which I was taken back, probably it was February timeframe, where the funding had dried up in terms of placement. So, this individual, you know, after spending probably a half a day with multiple behavioral therapists, caseworkers, you know, was transported outside the area, just because of a lack of funding that happened in February timeframe. This is not new. It's frustrating, because the people that provide those supports are at its end, and it's stressful for them, and in fact, this is why we're seeing a lot of these workers leaving these positions, because they feel that they're just not progressing their clientele and moving forward in terms of, you know, finding more permanent solutions for these housing issues. And again, these are individuals typically that have mental health or addiction issues that I'm talking about right now. So, I, I mean, I think that's that we have to start the bigger and the broader conversation in terms of what does that look like for the city of Pembroke and how Renfrew County is going to support, you know, Pembroke especially, and bringing these various different, you know, organizations together so that we could have meaningful dialogue and look for these long-term solutions. We have an out-of-the-coal program in terms of the Grind, and I'm sure that's probably why we saw some of your after-hours homeless supports drop, is because they're staying at the Grind overnight, not so much as a shelter, but staying out of the cold. We're going to have the same issues come the spring, when homeless people start, you know, living in tents in terms of our, our parks, living behind beer stores underneath bridges again. We're going to have these same types of issues. So, we really need the Renfrew County to, to really step up and, and, you know, be an active partner in terms of coming up with some, you know, long-term solutions to these issues, so. And I thank you and I commend you. It's a, it's a, it's a heavy lift, and anything that I can do to support efforts, I most definitely will provide any support that you need. I think this is critical to the success of our, our community and demonstrating that we really truly do care about each and every member. Not only the people that are actually, you know, living in Pembroke, but the people that are coming to Pembroke to, to acquire these types of services, such as addiction treatment and mental health treatment, specialties, specialized, hospitalized procedures and those kinds of things. So, thank you so much, and I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Counselor Purcell. Deputy Mayor Abdallah?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a comment and a couple of questions. First of all, I want to thank you for coming tonight, and I want to thank the county, and I want to specifically thank Ms. Lepin and Dombrowski. I sit on the Steering Committee with Ish Talheimer and Cameron Montgomery, the Affordable Housing Alliance of Ottawa Valley, and Ms. Dombrowski came to our meeting last May, and Ms. Lepin came to our town hall at the Legion in the fall, and you've been very supportive. And as Mr. Kelly, the CEO, has pointed out, it's all about partnerships. So, we're in the process of going to different communities. We're putting in an application to C M E C Innovation Rural Fund to hire a coordinator and to work with developers if we get the funding, and then we'll be coming to the county for support also, working together, you know, and it's all about those things. So, I wanted, I want to thank you for that and for the, the program that you, you have here. I just have a couple of questions, maybe three questions.
We'd like to confine you to one question per counselor, if possible.
Okay.
Otherwise, we'll be here till the evening.
Yes, till the cows.
If you don't mind, it, it just, everybody gets a chance. This is your second question. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
This is my first question.
Sorry, your first one.
Right, right. I get two questions or one? One question. Okay. So, the, we had the Grind here a few weeks ago, talking about the warming center, and there's been different issues in the area with, with challenges and that, and we're currently working on that. Does the data collected by the county indicate a need for a warming center? And if so, how did the county and city move forward in implementing a proper warming center in the area going forward? Because the Grind can't do it alone, and like, does the county provide financial support to the Grind? So, I guess it's two questions in one.
Through you, Chair. Very good question. So, let me talk a little bit about the last few years. So, when the pandemic hit, the Province of Ontario launched what was called the Social Services Relief Fund, which actually started off in 2020, and we ended up with five iterations of that fund, different amounts. And certainly preventing or assisting those who are homeless was one of the key cornerstones to, to that fund, and it was to assist people who were vulnerable in our community. So, it had many different layers to it. So, we, you know, supported a lot of agencies, a lot of food banks, a lot of counseling agencies, a lot of programs through that fund. And as more funding came, and certainly, you know, some of the programs that the Grind was offering, their food security programs, their meal programs, we were able to help offset those costs. We were able to assist with some of the costs with the warming center through that Social Services Relief Fund. The problem that we face right now is that the Social Services Relief Fund is over. It is totally over. It ended March 31st. It has been confirmed by the province that there is no more Social Services Relief Fund. We have a limited amount of funding that we do get every year through this new homelessness prevention program, and we have to take a look at how we meet the various needs and some of the programs that we've identified. We're certainly finding that there are a number of people that contact our office during the day and after hours who need a place to stay, but may not be accepted at any of our motels. And so, a warming center has certainly met that need in our community. It has given people who may have no alternative but to sleep outside, to be inside and where it's warm. We are working with the Grind. We have staff who go to the Grind two mornings a week to meet the, the folks that have been staying at the warming center, so that we make sure our staff, not everybody wants to work with us, not everybody wants that in their life, but certainly we want to be there so that we can enroll people in information sharing, get them what they need. Based on what we're hearing from the Grind, there's certainly been a need. We're certainly hearing from our staff that our call volume, coincidental or not, did go down, our after-hours call volume, when the warming center was launched. So, it's very hard for me to say, is it something that we need? I think, you know, a, a look back at how it has operated will be a really good indicator of whether this is something that, you know, is of value in the community. Anecdotally, I would say that my staff are reporting that they have seen people that have been struggling with mental health and addictions, and, and people struggling with, with housing who maybe can't, can't go to a motel or won't go to a motel, have a place to stay, and for some of these people, it, it's been the first time they've had a warm place at night. So, you know, I'm assuming that the report is going to suggest that a warming center meets a very important need in our community, and we will certainly be looking at the, the funding that we do get to see how we best support people and agencies in, in the County of Renfrew, including the city of Pembroke.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one question from the chair, just one, if I may. The, the developer that's taking place at the Sisters of St. Joseph's convent, is there any interlinkage with the County of Renfrew? And that, I know, I believe it's a private facility, but they're going to be putting in a fair number of single-family units or, you know, one or two bedrooms. I don't know what the exact plan is. Has there been any contact or any interaction?
Mike, I'll start off. I'll turn it to Laura. Well, you best handle it. I mean, it's something that, that we reached out in the early days when we were aware of it, and I think there's some further contact on, on how we can support them. The developer would need to meet the definition of affordable units, and I think that's where the struggle is right now, is that they're not quite meeting the definition, I think you heard earlier, of the 80%, to meet that exact definition. But although, they are, will be providing housing in Pembroke. So, I still think it's great, and I think it's, it's a, it's a good value, as I, as I understand it. Listen, any housing is good housing these days, right? I think that's, that's where it is.
Thank you very much. Did you have anything else to, to comment on?
Thank you, Chair, and I would just mention that while there's a variety of different housing out there in the community, including, you know, market rent and, and such, we manage a significant number of housing programs. The, the new development that is, or, sorry, the reconstruction of, of that building is taking place, and we certainly would enter into any kind of relationship that we can, but right- But right now, we're fully subscribed in all of our programs. So we have more maybe landlords or owners of property wanting, you know, to sign on with our rent supplement programs because that's a really good program. They're, they're getting the market rent. We just have a lo, a long list of folks and only a certain number of spots. So certainly if, when they're ready, if they want to have that conversation, we'd be more than happy to entertain it. You know, there are other facilities in the county of Renfrew and in the city of Pembroke. We work with other agencies, other services where they, you know, we're providing a rent top-up to maybe another, a client in another service who's then renting in the public market. So there's a variety of different schemes and things that we can do to assist, so we'd be more than happy to have those conversations. But as an affordable housing developer, that, that's not our development, so we don't own and operate that. We will have our units on Lee and Douglas Street and, you know...
Thank you. On behalf of Mayor Gervais and council, we'd like to thank you, CEO Craig Kelly. We understand the tremendous challenges that you have running an organization with over 600 employees. I believe 600 or, or...
900.
Pardon me?
900.
900, well. And 900, so that, that indeed is, is a challenge. And to Jason Davis, thank you for coming. And to Laura, I work with Laura on the, the housing committee, and I know she's the type of person that if she could, she would have that five- and 10-year waiting list all in a house somewhere. So we appreciate you for your efforts, and we know you have limited resources. You can only do the best you can. Thank you for coming and making the public aware of what's happening and our interactions with the county, city of Pembroke. Thank you very much. Next order of business, relief from the building permit fees for the county of Renfrew and 1030 Lee Street, Ms. Sorio.
Good evening. The county of Renfrew is about to enter into a site plan agreement with the city to build an eight-unit residential development at 1030 Lee Street, which you've just heard about. The county is asking that all municipal fees and charges, as they relate to the building at Lee and Douglas Street, would be waived. The cost for the building permit would be approximately $9,432.45. There is a need for a water meter for all new development. A water meter is required as part of the building permit, and this development would require a two-inch water meter at a cost of just under $1,300. But with HST, it's closer to $1,500. Development charges would not be required for this development. This project is exempt from development charges as per Section 8.1A of the Development Charges Bylaw, which exempts municipalities and schools from paying development charges. And this would provide the county with a savings of $39,312. Therefore, the cost to obtain a building permit and a water meter would be approximately $10,901.07, and this is the amount the county would like to see waived. All other costs associated to construct and service the building would be paid by the county of Renfrew. There are several options the county may want, sorry, the committee may want to consider in this matter. One is relief of the total building permit and water meter fees. Relief of the building permit fee, but payment of the water meter fee is required. Payment of the building permit and water fees, water meter fees, sorry, over a six-month period, which would just be about $1,800 per month. No relief approved or any other relief council may deem appropriate. So committee direction is required on this matter.
What is the wish of the committee? Mayor Gervais, Councilor Fournier?
Ms. Sorio, can you refresh my memory in terms of the contingency fund? Has this council used any of the funds in this year in respect to the contingency fund?
Would it be okay if I looked over at the treasurer?
Sure.
You haven't used any?
We haven't used any yet.
Your worship, I would put a motion on the floor that we waive the building permit fee as well as the wa...
It's Councilor, you're, you're worship.
Too many ears. Okay. Sorry about that. It's gonna be a long, it's gonna be a long night. I would put a motion on the floor to waive the building permit fee as well as the water meter fee.
Motion on the floor by the mayor. Secondary, Councilor Abdallah.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, Councilor Lefournier.
You guys are so easy. I just wanted to ask, what's our percentage of that amount that would be our cost? Because as you know, we share those costs, I believe. We're part of the county in that sense, are we not? Do we not pay a portion to housing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry.
I think it's part of a bigger portfolio.
Yeah, it is a bigger portfolio, but I know we do share those costs.
So social housing?
Yes.
So is your question, is 600, almost 606,000?
So I guess what I was looking at was we, a part of that is, so we're kind of paying ourselves back. So this is gonna save us a little money because we're not gonna have to pay this ourself. I think people understand what I'm talking about. So I wasn't sure if I wanted to waive the whole thing, but I'm interested in hearing other committee members discuss it. And if we do waive it, I hope that when we want money to assist the grind or some other kind of thing, I hope the county is favorable to us. Because I know we've sometimes asked and we don't get anything, so that's all, that's all I'm gonna say.
Other members of council, comments? Council, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Abdallah.
Well, it's been a long time since the county has received funding to build this type of community housing. And I know in discussions with Ms. Dombrowski and Ms. Lepin over the last few years, they've been trying to get the, the funding. And you, Councilor Jackinow, I'm sat on the Social Services Committee and the Housing Authority the last term also, and you and I have had many discussions about, you know, the funding from the government and how hard it is to get. And we, we do know there's a need for affordable and attainable housing, especially this kind, and I'm fully supportive of the motion. Thank you.
Councilor Plummer, Councilor Keel.
So I do support the motion. I'm not against it, but I'm, I'm still, the only thing I question is the, the waiving the fee of the water meters, because it's actually a physical product that the city has to own and pay for. The building fee, that's a number generated on basis of size, so that's, can be arbitrary. We've had presentation here that says we need to increase our building fees or lower them, so that's kind of up for debate. And in a sense, I'm fine with waiving that, but I'm only, my concern is just the water meter, because actually it's a physical object that we would, the city would have to pay for. So I would not be supporting. I would definitely support the building fee, but I would charge for the water meter. Thank you.
Councilor Keel.
I'm gonna take a third approach to this one. I agree with Councilor Plummer on the water meter, and I wouldn't support paying for that. But I'm possibly even more strict on, on the other fees. So, I mean, what we're talking about is, is city Pembroke taxpayers eating all of this. City of Pembroke taxpayers have already contributed $600,000 to the county of Renfrew. City of Pembroke residents have also contributed PSD and HST to the federal and provincial governments, from which the county of Renfrew also gets funding for its housing program. So it's, I mean, our taxpayers have, have paid for this in a couple different ways, and then we're coming back and, and asking them to, you know, to swallow, to fully swallow the whole, the whole building permit fee. I would, I'd be inclined to agree to some sort of shared percentage, but I wouldn't support the whole thing, and I wouldn't support the water meter.
Anyone else? The motion is on the floor. Can we have the motion reread, please? There's been a audit discussion.
That the Planning and Development Committee waived the total amount of the building permit fee and the water meter fees as presented.
So the motion is to waive the total fees.
Point of order. Wasn't that, your worship, to come into the contingency fund?
Yes. If there's no further discussion, I will call the question based on the motion. The second, are those in favor? Those against? Three. The motion stands. Thank you. Next order of business? Ms. Sorio? Planning Department fees.
So the recommendation is that committee direction be provided on the proposed changes as presented in this report. And if any changes are approved, relevant bylaws will be brought forward at a future meeting of council. So the city's planning department's fee structure was reviewed in 2019. Section 69 of the Planning Act states that the council of a municipality may establish a tariff of fees for the processing of applications made in respect of planning matters. The tariff shall be designed to meet only the anticipated costs to the municipality in respect of the processing of each type of application provided for in the tariffs. Therefore, total fees must not exceed the anticipated reasonable cost to administer planning applications. The Planning Act application process begins with a pre-consultation meeting, an application submission, an application review, notice of application, one or two public meetings, and a decision. And then notification again after a decision. So to obtain a recovery of expense, the following was taken into consideration: staff time, which includes myself, the chief building official, planning technician, and other staff that are reviewing applications, such as the operations department and the fire chief, supplies like paper envelopes, postage, newspaper ads, et cetera, and committee honoraria. So with a planning fee review of several municipalities took place, which included municipalities in Renfrew County and an interior municipality with the same population range as Pembroke. And the city of Pembroke's planning fees are typically lower than the average of other municipalities. The city's building department fees will not be reviewed at this time. The fees have been increased annually by the Consumer Price Index. And also, the city just hired a new chief building official in January, and it's recommended that he work with the existing fees and then provide a recommendation for fee increases in 2024. So based on the information compiled by the various municipalities and based on a cost-recovery basis, the planning department is recommending the following fees: that the zoning bylaw amendment be increased from $750 to $1,000. And only one municipality that was surveyed is lower than the $1,000. An official plan amendment would be increased from $900 to $1,200, and only, again, only one municipality is lower than the $1,200. A zoning bylaw and official plan amendment combination would go from $1,200 to $1,500, and many municipalities do not even offer a discount, so we would be offering that discount. A minor variance would go from $500 to $700, and again, only one municipality is under the $700. A severance would go from $600 to $800. And again, the range is, is, we would be within that range of other municipalities. Site plan agreement from $700 to $1,000. And again, we would be the lowest in the range of municipalities surveyed. Subdivision agreement, $1,600 to $2,000. Again, we'd be the lowest. Red line revisions from $625 to $800. There are not many comparables found, but this new amount does cover city costs. So I've, I have the reports here of what the costs are for each of these applications. And the encroachment agreement would go from 350 to 450, and again, not very many comparables that I could find. And zoning compliance letters, we're charging $75. I'm suggesting we go to $100, and most municipalities are charging at least $100. So by increasing the fees, staff is attempting to ensure cost recovery. Further, by increasing the fees as proposed and assuming the same amount of applications as in 2022, then the planning department's fees would be increased by approximately $14,200.
What is the wish of the committee? Discussion, Councilor Keel.
How much of a difference in terms of work is between a zoning bylaw amendment and an official plan amendment?
Through you here. It is approximately about the same. However, the actual bylaw requires a more, more detail than a zoning bylaw amendment. So there's quite a bit more writing for the official plan amendment. So that, that's the major change, the major difference, sorry.
Supplementary, Councilor Keel.
Plan of subdivision application, we seem to be, in terms of your other comparables, we seem to be off by $400. Potentially room to, room to move there as well?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, there is room to move. However, when I did my, my calculations, I came up to $2,000. You know, and, and maybe, you know, next year we look at it again, but I can justify the $2,000.
Councilor Plummer.
Yes, I believe it's, these are cost-recovery charges, so I don't have an issue with the proposed rates, as this is just covering the city's costs of doing business as well as providing a service.
Deputy Mayor Abdallah.
You're looking for a motion on this? Just a consensus direction?
If I have some direction, then I believe that would be adequate, and then there will be a bylaw forthcoming with all of the department's fee increases in the very near future.
Yeah, well, I'll make a motion. We accept the changes. I think the staff has done a thorough job of research in that, and going forward, we can always look at it again down the road.
Motion on the floor by Deputy Mayor Abdallah that we accept and move forward to have a bylaw bring brought forward, seconded by Councilor Keel. All those in favor? Those against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Next item? Mr. McEwen, visitor information center.
center in downtown Pembroke. As you may recall, a dedicated visitor information center was housed previously at 2 International Drive until approximately 2014 through the Community Futures Development Corporation at that time. Since that time, nearby hotels, the Best Western, as well as the Holiday and Express, have been unofficial providers of visitor information on behalf of the municipality as well as through the Upper Ottawa Valley Heritage Center. And this is presently conveyed through the sign located on that corner at Paul Martin Drive and International Drive, which is directing visitors to those two hotels for visitor information. The current owner at 2 International Drive has raised recent concerns with that causing confusion to visitors to his business, that he has stated those concerns anyway. Recommendations for this sign are currently being discussed by two of the city's advisory committees. The Pembroke Business Improvement Area has proposed a partnership to the city to open a visitor information center at 130 Pembroke Street West, the building colloquially known as the Phoenix Center, which already does house the PBIA office space. Now, the space that they are looking at is not the office for the PBIA, but rather the open office at the front of the building, so the sidewalk front of the building. So it would actually be visible from the sidewalk. And so this is a potentially advantageous space for AVIC. The PBIA has offered to cover the staffing of this center for six days a week in the summer months, as well as five days a week in the non-summer... for six days a week in the summer months, as well as five days a week in the non-summer months. But Thea Summers from the PBIA is here as well to answer any questions regarding the PBIA's side in this proposal. The OBT-A has lent their full support to this project. Melissa Marquardt, the manager of economic development, tourism, and small business, has noted this would fill a much-needed gap in the region and that piloting this initiative through two thousand and twenty-three would be a good approach to gauge interest, activity, and potential success. She believes that the location in the downtown core would be beneficial as it is close to where the majority of events are held within the city and could strengthen the sense of place from a tourism perspective. Looking at what the PBIA is looking for from the city with regards to this proposal, realistically, they are looking for a partner to make this center happen. So, they are looking for someone to evenly share the cost to make a pilot happen. They're looking for someone to evenly share the cost of the lease, which is coming at four hundred and fifty dollars a month for the space. They've been offered to lease it for one year, as well as to share the cost of signage, which we don't have official costs on. In the financial implications, I've estimated that roughly at about four thousand, just in highway signage, which is the most expensive part of that, as well as then signage at the physical buildings, signage throughout the city. That can be brought down significantly the more you cut down on some of that. So, just things to keep in mind, that the less signage you actually physically put up, the cheaper that gets. So, that has been the proposal put forward to test the viability of a visitor information center in downtown Pembroke over a one-year period. So, with that being said, I would like to turn it over to, to you, Chair, for the committee's thoughts.
Thank you, we have a number of counselors who'd like to comment on it. Counselor Keel, LaFernier, Deputy Mayor, and his worship.
Greeting this one with great skepticism. I love the, I love the idea of pulling people into the downtown. But typically, when I think of visitor information center, it's right there when you get into the city, it's easily visible, it's easy to get to. That's not how I would describe the Phoenix Center in any particular way. Also, what are, I mean, we've talked a lot about where it's going to be and partnering with PBIA. What exactly are we talking about in this visitor center? Because, I mean, I'm also, I mean, as to how many people still use visitor information centers, and I think it's a declining number. But like, why couldn't we, why couldn't we have a table downstairs right here in our own building with no rent? You know, that our, that our staff downstairs can, can direct people over to for maps or, or answer questions on, so I'm gonna be, need, I'm gonna need to be sold a bit more on this one.
Thank you, Counselor LaFernier, Deputy Mayor Abdallah, and his worship.
So, I'm gonna make a comment, and then I'm gonna make a motion. At last night's Tourism Advisory Committee, we discussed this, and we decided we needed more information because we know there's the sign issue of where do we move the sign, if we move the sign? And then there's the other issue, as Counselor Keel just said. With new technology and QR codes and things like that, I don't know in my mind that we need a, a physical visitor information center. But what we do want to do is talk to the Best Western and the Holiday Inn, review their procedures, and where do they have these information rack cards placed in the hotels? How many individuals are picking them up? Because I too feel the numbers have really dropped. We didn't really have any recent statistics. I think the last number was less than a thousand, and that was ten years ago or twelve years ago, and I, I stand to be corrected, but it was very low. Anyway, we, we want to review, get more information, and then I too was not sold on the fact that we needed a physical building to house this, that we could do it in our city facilities, that type of thing. So, I'm going to be putting forward a motion that we table this item until we have spoken with the other hotel accommodations through the city, and we'll bring back more information.
There's a motion to table by Counselor LaFernier. Did you want to comment before?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, just before the motion, just to speak to that a little bit. Just one of the points, I think, just to what Counselor Keel had said. I think one of the benefits specifically to a center as opposed to setting things up just, you know, downstairs here or something similar to that is having staff that are specifically trained for this, to be dealing with this full-time, because that would be part of what is going into this, is that the OBT-A have offered to put the staff that be, that would be working this through training to be specifically dealing with visitors that have a dedicated space that they are being directed to through signage to go to pick up visitor information, that they are not necessarily being misguided or misdirected, and they don't have staff who are either overwhelmed with other work or don't necessarily know what they're doing.
Ms. McEwen, I'm gonna have to cut you off because motion to table takes precedence. I wanted to give you the, a little bit of an opportunity, but the motion to table, obviously, information can come back. So, we got a motion to table by Counselor Fernier, a secondar by Counselor Keel. Those in favor of the tabling. The motion is tabled, no discussion. Thank you. Oh, want to oppose, excuse me? Let the record show that Deputy Mayor Abdallah was opposed, I'm sorry, I thought you had your hand up in agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McEwen. Next item, the OBT-A Service Agreement.
All right, thank you. So, at this point, we are bringing forward the OBT-A Service Agreement for two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-seven. And this is just an updated five-year service agreement for the partnership between the County of Renfrew and City of Pembroke. The proposed, the proposed agreement recognizes the continued importance for a concerted coordinated tourism promotion and development function between the County of Renfrew and City of Pembroke. Outside of municipal tourism activities, the agreement does seek to set out the specific set tourism promotion and development programs, which will represent the basis for an ongoing financial participation by the County of Renfrew and City of Pembroke towards a regional tourism program. To achieve tourism promotion and development. It will provide sustainable long-term financial resources towards this important economic, economic development activity. So, the vehicle for the activities and programs of the agreements are run through the Ottawa Valley Tourists Association, and the proposed agreement, as mentioned, is a renewal and modernization of the existing agreement, which has been in place for the past two decades. So, the agreement as put forward is really just an updating of some wording with some redundancies removed, as well as just some further agreements put in just for some agreements put forward just for some sharing of some assets between us for some photos and videos, and outside of that, everything has remained the same. This agreement has worked well between the county and the city, and we've recommended that we move forward with this again for the next five years.
Do we have comments from the committee or recommendations? Counselor Keel.
I think this is a, a great partnership, certainly for the city of Pembroke to go this alone and, and do our own advertising and promotion and all that kind of stuff. This is exactly the type of joint, joint venture that I think benefits our residents. My only question is, this, for this five-year term, we're looking at, I just had it, the city of Pembroke's contribution in two thousand and twenty-three shall be thirty-two, two fifty-three, is that what we budgeted, is that what we budgeted for?
Yes, that is, that's been the standard of what it's been, so nothing's changed from past years. And that's, that's been standardized through the past agreements, and nothing's changed from.
I'll be happy to support this.
Deputy Mayor Abdallah.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a great partnership, as Counselor Keel says, and saves dollars and promotes the whole area. What's good for Renfrew County, it's good for Pembroke and vice versa. Tourism is an economic generator, as we all know. And another good example of our partnership with County of Renfrew. So, I make a motion that we accept the agreement and approve the funding.
Motion on the, sorry, a motion on the floor by the Deputy Mayor to approve the agreement and approve the funding. Do we have a secondar, Counselor Plummer? As a secondar, did you want to comment, Counselor Plummer?
No comment necessary, it's a good program.
Thank you. I'll call the question, those in favor. Against, carried unanimously. Thank you. Next item. Explorer Pembroke Campaign, Mr. McEwen.
Okay. So, this year, after I received feedback from operators throughout the region, that both visitors as well as employees of the operators, that they were looking for information on what to do in the area and where to find things to do, and where to find regular amenities, regular activities, where to shop, where to find things in the area while they were here. Our department has launched the Explorer Pembroke Campaign, creating rack cards and posters to be delivered to the hotels and facilities monthly with listings of local events, recurring events, public skating and swimming, as well as a hotel guide that we have now developed, including a culinary guide, things to do, recreation, parking, faith, shopping, medical providers, and more. So, I'll go through those both briefly now to get you all a brief idea of what we've done with those. So, the guide, we've now made slight updates to it as of today, based on suggestions from our advisory committees this week. So, we are working on re-making those accessible this week, and so those should be re-uploaded to our websites later this week, after they're made accessible once again. And from there, we're working on getting the hotel guides into each hotel at the front desk and into the hotel rooms, as well as the rack cards into each hotel and our facilities as well to provide information to everyone coming into the cities. So, I'll share these here. We'll start with the guide here. And this isn't our finished project, product, but it's our close-to-finished product. In one moment, when Adobe cooperates with me. You'd think after three years of COVID, I would be good with Zoom. All right, so these are our hotel guides that we've started to move out throughout, that we will be starting to move out throughout the region, at every front desk and into every room, either physically or digitally, depending on how each hotel wants to move forward. And so, you'll see here just their table of contents, what we'll be working with. And so, just skimming through, this is what we wanted to base this culinary guide on. These were the options that we were hearing from people on what they were largely getting feedback on what people were looking for as far as options go. Vegan-friendly options, gluten-free options, looking for patios, looking for places that served alcohol, looking for places open late, we categorize this as open past nine PM, and looking for places serving breakfast. We had our delivery options there, as well as groceries. Had our nightlife and entertainment, so that people could have options for going out in the evening or finding some late-night fun. We had things to do, to go out, and whether they're on the weekend or on a weeknight, just getting out and experiencing the city a little bit. And then our adventures in the area were some of the things that you can't necessarily get in the city, but we want to get them to explore sort of the cultural fabric of the region. The parks, we focus on the major parks within the city where there are big experiences within the city. Our playgrounds, we gave them the experiences where if they're here with a kid, with a dog, or they just want to get active, that they have an opportunity to do that, and where they can do that. Golf, we gave them an option where if there's a golf range within, or a golf course within fifteen, twenty minutes, where they can do it. We give them an option where if they're looking for a legal intoxicant, where they can find it here. As well as shopping options, where they can find it here with our farmer's market, as well as our downtown, our malls, and a link right to our business directory on our website here as well to find all of our businesses, if they're looking for anything more than that. Our fitness and recreation page goes to any of our places within, within the city if they're looking to workout or do anything similar while they're here. Our relaxation is just the places that aren't licensed for registered massage therapy, anything that's just more focused on relaxation. Our faith page was places looking at churches, as well as we had the option in here for anyone coming from another faith backgrounds, that we wanted to make sure that they had an indication of where the nearest place was for them to go. A couple pages here on medical providers and where they could go to find help. As well then, information on parking and electric vehicle charging. And then, basic emergency information here, as well as information for mailing out for a post office. And that brings us to the end, and so that, that is our hotel guide and what we'll be putting out into the hotels in the coming weeks.
Comments?
Counselor Purcell, Counselor Keel.
Elijah, just, does it talk a little bit about the, the trail, the Algonquin Trail as well? Did I, did I not see it in there?
So, it's one thing that I have meant to put a little more thoroughly in there. And one of the hotels did ask me to expand on it a little more. And so, as I talk about that it's not our final yet, that is one more thing that I do have to expand on a little more still. Just in that recreation piece, that it does require a little more, because there's a piece in there about, you know, opportunities to get to trails, because it's mentioned in the waterfront piece, that you have an opportunity to get to the Algonquin Trail, as well as on the Kiwanis Trail, but it doesn't really expand on it as much as it should. And so, that's something that we want to really offer the opportunity to expand on that, especially for people who might be, they might be going, getting to the hotel because they got there on an ATV or on a snowmobile, but we want to make that clear for them.
Yeah, we have a lot of people that offload at one of the hotels and want to use the trails and want to access some of the restaurants downtown. Do we need to include, you know, cannabis shops? Do we need to include like where the liquor store and the beer store is? Is that something that's common? Is that something that's common to these types of, you know?
I think a lot of people are looking for it when they're traveling. And for our sake, like for our department, as far as economic development and tourism goes, cannabis is a $43 billion industry and we probably shouldn't be ignoring it. So for us, realistically, I think we shouldn't be turning a blind eye to it just for moral quandaries.
Yeah, but do we have beer store in there and liquor store?
Yeah, we do. And we have our craft brewers there too, to try and, you know, help them out for the sake of, you know, because it's, craft beer is trendy, for lack of a better word, right now too. And so we have a note in there for, you know, ask for them if you're out at a bar or at a restaurant, you know, see if they have it on tap or something similar to that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Keel.
Elijah, great job. This is looking so good. I can already see that this is sort of partnering with what the city's posting on Facebook in terms of the theme and the coloring and whatnot is the same. Going through it, there were so many good things that I liked about it. At one point, I think you mentioned electric charging stations. I might even highlight that a bit more, maybe make a green square or something. And the cost, I mean, I think, I think, was it in the report or something? You were saying a hundred dollars a month and then a thousand dollars in material costs. I mean, this kind of thing is worth its weight in gold. I would imagine we'll also be posting it on the city's website. This is looking, this is looking really good. And I think it's really, it's really supporting all of our businesses, including our cannabis shops. They're taxpayers too. And no, I think this is looking so good. The only actual thing that I thought might be problematic is I thought somewhere in here, there was a whole bunch of QR codes really close together. And when you do that, you can, your phone sometimes picks up a random one. Like it doesn't necessarily pick up the one you want. So I might be a little careful about that one, but otherwise, Elijah, this is looking absolutely fantastic. Just absolutely amazing.
Deputy Mayor.
No, I just want to thank Elijah and staff for, you know, coming to get, coming forward with another great initiative here. And sometimes people say, you know, there's nothing to do in Pembroke, but you can go dancing at the Legion on a Saturday, you can go to festival, you can enjoy a meal, you can go to Conquinn College and what, and their speaker series. So this is great and it's going to even get even better. Thank you.
Thank you, Elijah. Yes, go ahead.
And I think to your point there, Deputy Mayor of Dallas, that's what we're trying to do with particularly the Explore Pembroke series with the rack cards and with what we're doing on social media, is we're trying to change that perception that there's nothing to do here and showcase to people, both visiting here and living here, that there is, there are things to do and gather that all so that people can see that. And so we are trying to change that perception and trying to make so that people keep their money here so that they don't have to take their money out of town and keep it here and keep living here as well long-term. So thank you, much appreciated.
Congratulations. It's a wonderful job. And the front cover speaks to me in boxcar letters about we're diverse. The dancer, it's just so colorful and it sends a message. You don't have to say what it's about, it just screams diversity. On another topic, I spoke with Brian Hugley today from the, Hugley's Blueberry Farm on a different topic. But he indicated to me that people come from Montreal and Toronto to pick blueberries and they stay here for a number of days. So, you know, they come here to pick blueberries. Who would have thought that a blueberry patch would attract people to spend, you know, maybe a couple of grand in your community? So excellent job. Anyone else?
Thank you all.
Have a good evening. Next item. Ms. Seabert, Item F, Updated Pembroke Economic Development Advisory Committee Terms of Reference. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. So the Pembroke Economic Development Advisory Committee recommends that the Planning and Development Committee approve the new terms of reference for the Pembroke Economic Development Advisory Committee that are attached to this report. For the 2022-2026 Term of Council, the former Pembroke Economic Development and Tourism Advisory Committee was split into two committees. The Pembroke Tourism Advisory Committee, or PTAC, and the Pembroke Economic Development Advisory Committee, PDAC. The Pembroke Economic Development Advisory Committee reviewed the former PTAC Terms of Reference and recommended some changes to better reflect economic development mandate of this committee. So I'll just note just a few of the additions to the Terms of Reference. So under Purpose Mandate, you'll see highlighted the attraction and retention of workers across all sectors within the municipality with added focus on professional services and skilled trades. So, and the retention of local students and young persons to the municipality, including promoting the return of local youth following their educational pursuits. So the PDAC will provide advice and recommendations to the Planning and Development Committee of the City of Pembroke on matters relating to, and these are the two additions that were recommended. And then under Duties and Responsibilities, there was, there was another one added here. So we'll promote economic prosperity within the City of Pembroke by advising the Planning and Development Committee on the local labor market and making recommendations concerning efforts to attract and retain workers generally and in key target areas, both in the short term and the long term. And then there was just a minor change that under membership selection, beginning of each council term, the City of Pembroke shall, rather than place an advertisement within the newspaper and on its website, just generally, the City of Pembroke shall advertise for expressions of interest from individuals who are residents of the City of Pembroke or are in a position to contribute positively to the betterment of the community. There's, there are no financial implications in my reports.
This is council, Counselor Plummer, Counselor Keel.
No, I've read the terms. As being a former member of that committee, I think it's a welcome addition for certainly for youth retention and worker retention to the area. So I would move to approve the changes.
Moved by Counselor Plummer, seconder, Counselor Keel. Further discussion? Those in favor? Against, moved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further business before this committee, I would entertain a motion of adjournment. Moved by Counselor Keel, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Those in favor, we are adjourned.
Welcome everyone to the April 4 Finance and Administration Committee for Pembroke City Council. Like to call the meeting in order. Any disclosure of pecuniary interests in general nature thereof? Mayor Gervais.
Mr. Chair, I would declare perceived pecuniary interest in respect to seat six, sorry, I, even though it's for information purposes only.
Six I, okay. Look, the records show six I. The mayor's declared a pecuniary interest in general nature thereof. Approval of the meeting agenda. Counselor Keel, second, Counselor Plummer. Those in favor, carried. Verbal the minutes from the Finance Administration Committee of March 7. We have Counselor Jackinow and Mayor Gervais. Any questions or comments on those minutes? No? Those in favor, carried. Any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, we'll proceed to new business. We welcome with this annual, with this monthly report, annual was the last meeting, for March 2023, Chief Sell. Welcome, Chief Sell.
Thank you, Chair. March is a fun time at the fire hall. We continued our partnership once again with the Pembroke Public Library and presented our junior firefighter program over the March break. This is geared towards the age of the children and we discuss topics, you know, like what to do when you face a fire in your home. You know, we try to get into their heads, the idea of get out and stay out and the importance of having a meeting spot. So normally, we cap this event right around 14 children, as we generally have just the one instructor. And once again, we met the 14 children threshold again. And on top of the educational part of it, they do get to do some activities in the firehouse, like with the fire hose, you know, tour the truck and of course have lunch with Sparky. The following week, we entertained some students from fellows. Forty-four students attended this session and this session is a little more in-depth. It touches on more fire safety in the home, but also expands into possible future workplaces that these students may be moving into. It also gives the students a chance to see what it takes to become a firefighter and they get to discuss some of the preparations that would be required if they were to choose this as a career path. Later in the month too, we held a training session with the 42nd Field Artillery Regiment at the Pembroke Armories. And once again, this is another good training session where we get right into depth with what these, what these members would be facing in the field. Public safety messaging for March focused on safe smoking habits and the dangers of improperly discarded smoking materials. We also focused on reminding everybody to check, change their batteries and their CO alarms whenever the clock springs forward. We partner, and once again, we continued our partnership with the Renfro County Fire Chiefs and provided messaging in the Eaganville leader. On our social media pages, we were happy to recognize International Women's Days, Day, our Firefighters of the Month, our Junior Firefighter Program, and our Fellows Tour. So Employee of the Month recognition went to firefighter Daryl, or Acting Captain Daryl Andrews and Volunteer firefighter Trevor Popke. I'd just like to mention that Acting Captain Andrews' work ethic is honestly second to none. And it's his tireless efforts that keep our vehicles and equipment on the road and ready for our ready for our emergency responses. So congratulations to Daryl and Trevor. Vulnerable occupancy drills, right now we're still in the follow-up phases with Marion Hill and PRH. The annual drills and inspections generally begin in May and then they'll, they'll go throughout the summer and into the winter months into December. Under emergency management, so we had our first program committee meeting of 2023 in March. It was decided at the committee level that we would move back to the quarterly meetings as opposed to the semi-annual meetings, which were due to COVID. So from this meeting, there'll be some things that will be brought forward to council in the near future for your decision. Staff from various departments throughout the city also tended the basic emergency management training session. It was a two-day course held at the Fire Hall. And once again, it doesn't look like it outside, but the spring for shet has begun and we are attending the weekly update, update meetings. And I'm keeping the Emergency Management Committee abreast of any new information. However, there's been no new information to share. Things are pretty much at a normal level. They expect the melt to actually begin in the next few days, hopefully. As far as the EOC goes, the Training Room did host the Renford County Chiefs Association Meeting in March. Like I said, we hosted the emergency management course and we also hosted in-house training sessions and meetings. In March, the Firefighters Association sponsored a public skating event at the PMC during March break and the association also donated to the Jen Driscoll benefit to help in her battle with cancer. The staff training, the focus on staff training for March continued with health and wellness with the documentations provided through human resources training. This also covers equity, diversity and accessibility training. More training is broken down in the, in the report. The total number of inspections and consultations for March was 213. We attended 27 emergency responses with zero dollar loss and we had three letters of warnings sent out in March and one fine is still outstanding.
Thank you for the report, monthly report Chief. Do we have any questions or comments from council? No? Thank you very much Chair.
Wait, so the next report is going to be just the update of the Fire Department user fees. You heard, you heard Ms. Oriel update her fees with the planning department. I didn't discuss it in the report, however, if you remember when I became chief, it was late in 2021. I did a complete review and update of the, of the Fire Department user fees and I, and those fees still are current and applicable and meet the, meet the needs of our department. So the two items that I've listed in this report are just basically to acknowledge CIP increases to vehicle accidents and our water rescue towing fees. And the idea of these increases are to, is to bring the schedules in the bylaws up to, just so that they reflect the current costings that are in our agreements with Laurentian Valley.
Do we have any motions or questions for the Chief? Councillor Plummer?
Yeah, I would motion to approve the changes the Chief recommends.
Seconder, councillor Keel?
Sure, with a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
In terms of the false alarms, I know that's not one that you looked at, is, is it supposed to read third false alarm or more? Or just first, second and third and the fourth is free?
I'm not overly familiar with the wording, but I know what the intent is. The intent is that, that, that third false alarm fee would be added to each additional false alarm after the third one as well.
If councillor Plummer wanted to maybe agree with that, perhaps that's a change that you might want to look at without having to reopen the motion?
I would certainly agree to the comments that there may be some wording needed to be added to the false alarms to therefore that, that any additional false alarms after the thirds are still being charged.
Any further discussion? So we've motioned on the floor to approve the CPI increase, the bylaw 2022 dash 35 for vehicle accidents, water rescue towing. Those in favor carried? Thank you Chief. Next up, we welcome our Treasurer and Deputy Clerk Angela Lauchti with a number of items. Welcome. First one being the policy, conventions and seminars.
Thank you. So the first report tonight is on policy 500 dash 03, conventions and seminars. Currently, this policy provides direction regarding employee attendance at conferences, conventions, seminars, workshops and business meetings with associated reimbursements. So currently this policy stipulates for meals gratuities and incidentals that the city will reimburse actual and reasonable expenses supported by receipts. So certainly the lack of clarity about what is considered reasonable has led to many questions by both managers and staff with some examples provided in the report. Most government organizations provide reimbursement for meals and incidentals on a per diem basis. So this approach simplifies the process and provides clear direction to staff while still providing a reasonable reimbursement of expenses and meet policy objectives. So it is recommended by staff that we update HR policy 500 dash 03 to reimburse meals and incidentals on a per diem rate as per the Canada Revenue Agency Directive on Travel, Appendix B, meals and allowances. So this is an appendix that's updated on a regular basis, so it's always up to date. And it does follow and align with the city's adoption of the CRA mileage rates, which we now honor within the city. So the proposed policy does include a couple of exceptions, which reflect exceptions that also can be found in federal government policy. So for example, if meals are provided as part of the event or the training, then no meal allowance would be reimbursed for that particular meal or meals. Certainly if dietary needs cannot be met by the event or the venue, then reimbursement based on receipts is permitted as well as for other circumstances outside the control of the traveler. We're also proposing, just to clean up some wording, within the policy around who needs to approve what? So right now in the policy, it says that the CAO has to basically approve everything, whereas the revised policy suggests that the department heads approve their staff, the CAO approves the department head's requests and the mayor approves the CAO's requests. So just to simplify the process and to reflect the actual practice that's taking place within the city right now. So in conclusion, staff is looking for committee approval to the proposed amendments that are enclosed and if approved, a formal bylaw would be brought forward for adoption at the next regularly scheduled meeting of council.
Thank you. So we have councillor Keel, then we have councillor Plummer?
I think everything looks good. I think providing a per diem, I think, gives a dependable number to the staff so that when they, when they are out and spending, they know what is actually going to be approved. Taking some things off the CAO's plate, I mean, I think we all absolutely trust our department heads. We have a great, we have a great management team here in the city of Pembroke, fully in favor of it and I would move that we support the Treasurer's recommendation.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a seconder, councillor Plummer?
Yes, I was just going to second and echo councillor Keel's comments that per diem is just a simpler calculation on meal allowances while out of town.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Yes councillor Purcell?
Through you Chair, in regards to alcohol, can you just expand in regards to what the policy is in regards to alcohol?
Two point four four.
Two point four four?
So currently the policy is silent on the matter, so this would no longer be an issue because we would just move to a per diem and
Okay.
there's no need for receipts or to review any of that.
Okay, okay. We have a, I'm just familiar with the per diem process, but in terms of alcohol, you would still have to declare that in terms of the alcohol was, was part of that business expense.
Okay.
As a per diem, yeah. So there's no receipts at all, it's just a per diem.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Councillor LeFrenier?
Just to clarify, the only time that there's a mention of alcohol is if they go over that meal allowance per diem and it's reasonable, it can't include alcohol. That was the only, okay?
So any other speakers? No? We have a motion on the floor to accept the proposed amendments to policy 500 dash 03, conventions, seminars, those in favor carried unanimously? Okay, thank you. Next item, festival hall contract amendment with Adventure Entertainment.
Thank you. So at the January 19 Festival Hall Committee Meeting, it was proposed to adjust the terms of compensation between the consortium of the three member municipalities and Adventure Entertainment to reflect annual consumer price indexes with costs shared between the consortium members based on impact population. So this change was proposed to address the unexpected reduction of Adventure's annual compensation, which was originally based on impact population figures. So at the February 7 Finance and Admin Committee Meeting, this change was approved in principle. So since this point in time, all three member municipalities have agreed to the change in principle. So as per the agreement with Adventure Entertainment, any modification of the agreement must be approved by all three council consortium members and it needs to be in writing, so a copy of the proposed bylaw amendment to their agreement is attached. As a result of some feedback from the township of Laurentian Valley, a 3% cap on the annual increase has been added to the wording. So at the February 24th meeting of the Festival Hall Committee, this modification was approved by the committee and it's now being brought forward to each council for formal adoption. So this report is being presented for information and a bylaw will follow as part of the council agenda package later this evening.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Yes councillor Keel?
So sitting on the Festival Hall Committee, I'll just update us very quickly. If we recall from the last, the last time this was before us, basically what happened was impact was actually suggesting that the population of Pembroke, Petawawa and Laurentian Valley was actually decreasing, which was causing Adventure Entertainment's fee to decrease, which of course was not, I think, what any of us had anticipated. And then it was also suggested, I think after Laurentian Valley took a look at it, that while we do want the CPI increase, Laurentian Valley wanted a cap. So that's where the 3% cap came from. I think it's, I think it's very fair and certainly it was supported, as the Treasurer said, by the Festival Hall Committee and now I think by all municipalities.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? No? So there'll be a bylaw coming forward tonight council meeting? Thank you. Next item, Pembroke and Area Airport Commission 2023 budget.
So this is an annual item. Currently, the Pembroke and Area Airport Commission is required to submit their annual budget for the approval of each member council as part of the joint ownership, management and funding agreement. So the 2023 budget submission is attached along with a breakdown of the allocation for each municipality that has an interest in the airport. So the city's share of costs for 2023 is $20,821 and change as compared to a budget of $22,000 and as compared to the 2022 contribution of $19,906 and change. So the Pembroke and Area Airport Commission is seeking approval of their 2023 budget from committee.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers or comments? Councillor Plummer, you sit on the Airport Commission.
Yes.
Would you like to comment please?
Well, the Airport Commission always presents a balanced budget. They're basically trying to reflect costs as, as well as revenue. You'll see in the last few years, they've showed a constant, you know, surplus, you know, you can never plan for a fire, that's the biggest thing at the airport. We say, no one likes to see a fire, but when the forest fires rage, the gas price, the gas, the money comes in because you'll have M&amp;R park planes on the runway and continually fuel and be lots of cost. So again, hope there is no fires this, this season, but if it, if things do happen, we have a, and I'm sure the M&amp;R will take care of it and the airport will benefit from all the fuel sales.
Thank you. Councillor Jackinow?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I think an airport is crucial to any small community. Having an airport in a small area such as this still leaves you a window that's open to the world. People can fly in here from anywhere in the world, whether it's business people, et cetera. People are doing business at ACL, CFP, Petawawa. So to maintain and keep that airport in, in good shape is crucial and I think the partners understand that. And perhaps our, our funding should even in the next year or two be higher to support their needs. Thank you.
Councillor Purcell?
Last week I had the pleasure of meeting with the ECL and CNL in regards to the Environmental Stewardship Council and they talked a little bit about, I had asked the question in regards to the importance of the airport to their supply of isotopes. I know they're looking at developing radioisotopes for, for cancer treatment, actinium and does have half-life and they're looking at the airport down the road as maybe one of those solutions in terms of, to help them with distribution. So just another opportunity for the airport going forward.
Thank you. Somebody want to like make a motion to accept the budget? Councillor LeFrenier? Seconded by councillor Plummer. Any further discussion? Those in favor carried? Next item, provincial dedicated gas tax funds agreement.
So this is another annual report. So the city has been advised by the Ministry of Transportation that the city of Pembroke will be eligible to receive funding in the amount of $118,783 for the 2022-23 fiscal year under the dedicated gas tax funds for public transportation program. So to secure the city's share of funding, the Ministry of Transportation must receive a signed letter of agreement, which is attached. And this, this requires council to pass a bylaw authorizing the mayor and CAO to execute the agreement. And this funding is for the Pembroke Handy, Handy Bus, which operates a specialized transit service in the city of Pembroke as well as the township of Laurentian Valley. So the city of Pembroke is considered the host municipality and as part of this agreement, the township of Laurentian Valley also has to pass their signature via bylaw, which has been received. So this is for information with a bylaw coming forward to council later this evening.
So there's a bylaw coming forward tonight on this, so you don't need a, you don't need approval now? Any questions or comments regarding the gas tax? Councillor LeFrenier?
Through you to Ms. Lauchti. Do you know how it's calculated, this gas tax?
I actually just received some backup to that, so which I can forward to you. It's basically a combination of how much we spend and how much ridership is and how much the funding envelope is. So it's a combination of those three things that determines how much funding we receive.
Ridership?
Yeah, so how many people take the bus as compared to the rest of Ontario?
We don't have a bus.
The handy bus?
The handy bus. So this gas tax is based on the handy bus stats? Oh, okay. Because I was under the impression it had something to do with taxes on gas that we contribute, because if they did that in the valley, we would certainly get a lot more, wouldn't we? Yeah, it doesn't seem fair. Thank you.
Mayor Gervais?
So I can just say what the Madam Treasurer is saying is that it's based upon ridership. The handy bus keeps track, obviously, when we get annual reports in terms of the ridership. The ridership then is provided to QDA, I believe is the, the name of the organization. When we went through COVID, the province did a number of different things, as we know, they gave us certain funds for COVID and so forth. gave us certain funds for COVID and so forth, but they also topped up those because obviously ridership tanked because no one was allowed to leave the homes and so forth. But in any event, on a normal year, it's based upon ridership and is based upon funds in terms of, in terms of gas tax, but occasionally the province does top it up. But there is a, there is a formula. It's not pie in the sky. Similarly, I think it's Town of Renfrew and neighboring municipalities. The Town of Renfrew is the, the one that, that is the host, if you will, and then the other ones support that as well. And again, it's based upon ridership and this calculation.
Thank you. Next item, monthly accounts.
So enclosed is a list of payments made to vendors, including payroll totals and electronic payments made for the month of December. Staff is providing this informa, this report as information and considers them to be in order. Thank you.
Thank you for that information item. Next item, procurement policy, delegation of authority and spending thresholds.
So the city reviews its procurement bylaw every five years with the last update occurring in two thousand twenty-two under bylaw two thousand twenty-two dash forty-one. So recently, the city's delegation of authority and associated spending thresholds for the different levels of city management have been discussed again by key members of staff. The spending thresholds that are set in our procurement policy determine basically who approves what. So who approves spending for specific financial transactions up to the council-approved budget. So in conjunction with these spending limits, it should be noted that the procurement policy does state that you can't divide things into two or more parts to get around the provisions of the policy. While there are provisions in the policy for emergencies, failure to plan is not an emergency and the procurement policy has to be followed for all regular budgeted spending, and failure to adhere to the city's procurement policy can result in disciplinary action. So based on staff discussions to increase efficiency and address supervisory feedback, it has been recommended to increase the spending threshold level for supervisors, for individual spending transactions from the current threshold of fifteen hundred dollars to five thousand dollars, managers from five thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars. And in order to ensure appropriate oversight, vendor invoices would still be approved by the department head or delegated to their managers at the discretion of the department head. So a summary of this proposed change is included in the report, and staff are seeking committee support. And if this support is provided, a formal bylaw will be brought forward for approval at the next regularly scheduled meeting of council.
Thank you. Questions, comments, motions? Counselor Lefrenier?
I would move we approve the, the suggestion there, the recommendation.
Kate Segunder, Counselor Purcell, motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next item, legal services. CEO, Mr. Unrah. Right? Yeah. And we'll take note that Mayor Gervais left the table. He declared a pecuniary conflict of interest for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the city of Pembroke uses several lawyers throughout its daily business, employment, labor lawyers, integrity commissioners, business lawyers, criminal defense lawyers, personal injury lawyers. I would just like to report, there was a bit of confusion that Robert Shepherd, the person, not the firm, was appointed by council as a city solicitor in two thousand and two, July sixteen. And also note that Mr. Gervais is not a partner in the firm, but an employee. Also would just like to report that, talking to the staff, that we receive excellent service from Mr. Shepherd. It's always received on time, efficiently, and the timeliness of the response is appreciated by stance. Bylaw two thousand twenty-two dash forty-one is our procurement bylaw, and so there are a number of services that are exempt from the procurement bylaw. And so it's listed under appendix B, and arbitrators, mediators, legal settlement, realty services including acquisition, disposal, collection agencies, and legal fees. So the other item I just wanted to mention is that it is at the discretion of the CEO that legal services are taken into account. You know, there's, there's certain things that, that come up throughout the, the daily business. And this was a process that I discussed with other municipalities, and it is very similar to other municipalities. So currently, the city, and this is just a short list, unfortunately, we do use a lot of lawyers. So we do have Bob Shepherd from Shepherd and Gervais, Tony Fleming, Cunningham Swamp, and Little Bonham. So there, he's our integrity commissioner, James McCarthy, Marine Houston is Templeton. She, she does all our HR-related items. And then if we're ever sued through Intac Insurance, they'll provide lawyer services. So that's all I wanted to say in regards to the report if there were any questions.
Thank you, CEO. This is an information item. Do we have any questions or comments? Counselor Keel?
So I, I take one issue with your report, and that's the suggestion that Bob Shepherd was appointed the person and not Shepherd and Gervais. I, I certainly saw the bylaw, and I would agree that the bylaw does that, but I think we're really splitting hairs there in a, in a way that I think is, is, is a little colored. Certainly, when I was at Shepherd and Gervais between two thousand and ten and two thousand and sixteen, I did a lot of work for the city. I prosecuted all of the city's property standards bylaws. The reports that I saw going out were on Shepherd and Gervais letterhead, and I'm pretty sure the accounts that go out are Shepherd and Gervais accounts that are paid by the city. So I think trying to, trying to dissect that, I don't know is fair to reality. So I do, I do have an issue with, with that sort of being underscored. My other issue is, is just the, is just the timing of it. I mean, in, in two thousand and two was a long time ago. I don't know what, I don't know what Mr. Shepherd was billing in two thousand and two, but I would presume that he's not billing the same amount in two thousand and twenty-three. So if we, if we haven't looked at this at all, if we haven't, you know, if we haven't so much as, as canvassed what's out there, there's, there's a lot of great firms in Renfrew County. I just think, you know, saying, saying that we're getting, saying that we're getting great service is fine, but we also need to be treating the taxpayers with respect. And, and right now around this table, we couldn't, we couldn't tell them if we were or not. So, I mean, I get that it doesn't fall under the procurement bylaw, but I think we should probably review some of our agreements that are twenty-plus years old. It's not to say that we, it's not to say that we actually go anywhere else. It's not to say that, that we're not getting a good service, but, but we can't say either way based on the information that we have right now. So those are my comments.
Counselor Jackinow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And in reaction to some of Counselor Keel's comments, you know, I understand fully, you know, that what you billed twenty years ago is not the same as what you build today. And I'm sure you could attest to that yourself, being a lawyer, you don't charge the same amount from year to year, do you? Or you wouldn't be in business. The other thing is, you know, looking at sourcing out to other legal people, we did that years ago. But here was the initial, here was the problem. You had somebody, if somebody was not doing the job for you, they were incompetent, they were overbilling you to the extent that they were milking the community and the taxpayers, that was the time for that individual to go. I'm not saying that happened, but council did in previous years. Look at that. They said, you know, maybe we should firm this out a little bit, which, which really is fair and fair to the taxpayer. What is unfair to the taxpayer is this. If you get a new person who's totally devoid of the knowledge of what has happened in the municipality over the last five or six years, he's got to come up to speed on that. And that can definitely be a disadvantage to you, whereas you have a person who has some experience and capability and knows the system, knows who to contact, et cetera. You save yourself a pile of money. And I think for that particular purpose, and as I said, if the individual was not doing the job, that's why we're here as a council, to either give him the boot or say, you're not doing what you should do, or retain him. And I think what we've have in the past is retain that individual with the corporate knowledge that he had attained over that number of years, which was to our advantage as a municipality and to the advantage of the taxpayers because he would save us money.
So Counselor Keel, is your comment related to the?
Directly.
Okay.
So I, I will never discount having, having a lawyer for a period of time and that they do develop a relationship. I've developed lots of relationships with my clients over the years. But I also want to remind this council that Mr. Shepherd is in his seventies. Mr. Gervais, I think we would all agree, could not take over the city solicitor contract, or he could, he should not take over the city solicitor contract. And the other person in Mr. Gervais' firm at the moment is Ryan Paulson, who I think has been called for one year. So again, I, I fully agree with Counselor Jackinow's comments, but we're going to end up with a transition at some point in time. And would we like Mr. Shepherd to be around during that transition? Or do we potentially put ourselves in a place where something happens or, or he retires on, I presume he would give some notice, but, you know, perhaps not years' worth of notice. So I just, there's, there's some things that I think should be looked at, and I think the, I've been hearing a lot in the community that people are questioning this. And again, I'll state right here on the record, I'm not saying we end up going with someone else, but we haven't looked at this in twenty, twenty-one, since two thousand and two, twenty-one years. So that, that's all I'm saying. And, and I don't, you know, I'm not hearing any, anybody banging for blood out in the community, but there's, there's a lot of people questioning it at the moment.
So we have an information item here. There's a lot of comments. I'll allow a bit more leeway. Counselor Jackinow, then we have Counselor Purcell?
I'd like to respond to Counselor Keel. And first of all, I cannot believe what I'm hearing coming out of your mouth, that a person that is seventy years of age may not be competent to do the job. Winston Churchill ran, Winston Churchill ran a country when he was ninety. No, no, no point of order.
Point of order, excuse me.
You were discriminatory, you were discriminatory against that individual, mentioning his age, mentioning his age, and that's wrong.
A point of order takes precedence, Counselor Jackinow, and I'm sure you know that, having been on council for some time. But you just talked over me for thirty seconds. A point of order take.
I apologize for you not having the right opinion on, on age.
Okay, point of order, yes.
What I, I said nothing about Mr. Shepherd's competence. Nothing. Not a word. What I, what I said, what, no, it wasn't. What I said is that he's in his seventies. He might retire. We end up with health problems. I said nothing about his competence. Not a single word. And I would ask you to withdraw your statement.
Will not withdraw my statement. I stand by it.
Okay. So I'm gonna have Counselor Purcell speak, and then we'll go from there.
I think after twenty-one years, it's, it'd be the responsibility of the municipality to kind of look at, you know, the services that are being provided by Mr. Shepherd. And that's the reason why I'm providing notice of motion at our next regular meeting, that we will, I will move that the.
Excuse me, point of order, that will come during the, at the next regular meeting?
Yep.
So that's.
That's right.
Okay.
That at the, and I'm just trying to give us a little context, that the, sorry, that I'll move that the municipality issue request for proposal for the provision of legal services. And the proposal will specify the scope of the legal services required by the municipality, as well as included, not limited, the general advice and consultation, representation, litigation, and drafting of bylaws and other legal documentation. It'll be publicly advertised. And, you know, if, based on the assessment and procurement processes, that it meets the requirements in terms of the city, then we can continue with, with Mr. Shepherd. But at least it's an opportunity that we actually demonstrated our due diligence as a council, looking at those resources. And I would suggest that if we have other contracts that have been in place for greater than, you know, five or six years, that we need to look at those. And just because it's not in the procurement bylaw, doesn't necessarily mean that we don't demonstrate our due diligence as, as, as a, as a council in looking at those resources and making sure that we're getting the best bang for a buck and the best bang for, sorry, the taxpayers' dollars. So that's it. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, CEO, for that information item. Moving on, we have, can you, the Mayor Gervais, step back in, please? Okay, item J, municipal conflict of interest act and code of conduct advice. CEO, Mr. Unrah?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So basically, anything that the municipality does is governed by the Ontario Municipal Act. So under two, two, three point one of the Ontario Municipal Act, it talks about code of contact and a definition of the code of conduct. Under two, two, three point two, a municipality shall establish code of contacts for members of the council, of the municipality and its local boards. And so just to note that we, that we do have that in regards to the, the code of conduct, and that's all signed by council as they take their term. Further on, in that same clause, under two, two, three point three, talks about the integrity commissioner. So, and it talks about the, authorizes the municipal to appoint an integrity commissioner who reports to council and who's responsible for performing in an independent manner the functions assigned by the municipality with respect to any of the following. And it provides a list of specific actions, and then that any request for advice to the integrity commissioner be put in writing. So just kind of put some context in regards to the report. So again, this, this report is for information. So as noted, under section two, two, three point three, you know, gives the, the municipality the authority to hire an integrity commissioner. And so the city of Pembroke entered into an agreement with Mr. Tony Fleming of Cunningham Swamp, Cardy, Lily, Bonham, for an integrity commissioner services under bylaw two, two, two zero, two, two dash twenty-five from March fifth, first, two thousand twenty-two to January first, two thousand twenty-five. So just to provide a little bit more background, in September of two thousand twenty-two, the then mayor, Deputy Mayor, and now Mayor, made an application to the city of Pembroke to purchase a portion of road allowance adjacent to a vacant piece of land he owned at, on the Indian River. The integrity commissioner was asked to review the actions as it pertains to the, both the municipal conflict of interest act and also the code of contact that I referenced earlier. So just to, I don't want to read the whole statement within the written report that the integrity commissioner has provided, but just to highlight a couple items. We are not aware of any attempt to influence staff or council on this issue, and as such, in our opinion, that you have not breached the municipal conflict of interest act. So that we referenced earlier. And we also considered the relevant sections of the code of conduct and do not believe that your actions constitute a contravene of any applicable provisions in, of the city's code of. code of conduct. It's not a conflict or unethical for a member of council to make an offer to purchase city-owned land. So, just open up, any questions?
Any questions for the CEO? Counselor Purcell?
I just find that when we look at the procurement processes, if it's a surplus good, you know, it's very strict in here in regards to the sale of such goods of employees, elected officials, or the family members and other occurrences prohibited. So, if it's a piece of equipment, I can't buy it. But if it's a piece of land that is available, where the general population is available, I think that there is inside knowledge in regards to the availability of that land at that price. And that's the biggest concerns that I have. And if you look at the surplus of materials, it's the same thing. So, why can I not buy a piece of recycled equipment? I'm not allowed to purchase that, but a piece of land I can purchase.
Yes, CEO?
Yeah, just to clarify, so, you know, the integrity commissioner is an independent agent, doesn't work for the municipality, is responsible, you know, under, you know, his duties and regulations, to be independent and act in regards to the code of conduct and all our policies and procedures. And he made the statement, it is not a conflict or unethical for a member of council to make an offer or purchase city-owned land.
But not equipment, based on our policies.
Any further comments or questions? Counselor Jackano?
Mayor, thank you. I understand where Counselor Purcell's coming from. There doesn't seem to be any designation between land and equipment. So, the actual jurisprudence and the question was about the piece of land, not whether his worship was purchasing a truck. He was purchasing a piece of land that was adjacent to his property, a postage-sized piece of land, obviously, and he's gone to initial expense to have it surveyed and also to have it, what's the word I'm looking for? You go to Rivington and these people and have the land assessed as to for value. So, he's gone to a considerable amount of expense to buy something that I don't think, or just looking at it, I don't think anybody would want. It's, you know, it runs along a gutter and a ditch, and the only benefit it would be, would be to his property, perhaps to plant a flower bed. So, you know, if there is a question as to, you know, the judgment against what was asked, then the judgment that I see is correct. Like, we didn't ask him if he was buying a truck. He wasn't buying a truck. He was buying a piece of land, and was he in conflict? And the judgment says no. So, you know, if you want to argue with the judgment of a person that is legally trained to give us those opinions, then, I mean, you could do that. We could do that as a council. But I don't feel there's any point in doing it.
Counselor Keel?
I think what Counselor Jackano is missing is the idea that this wasn't whether or not the deputy mayor broke the law. There was, I don't, I don't believe...
Point of order? You said deputy mayor.
The mayor broke the law. I don't think there was ever a suggestion of that outside, perhaps, maybe some Facebook comments. I think what, and I'm not going to put words in Counselor Purcell's mouth, but what I understood Counselor Purcell to saying is that we have a larger issue here, not the specific one with this specific deal. But I think what he's pointing to is that it's probably unethical, and it certainly smells funny, when members of council, or indeed, if it were members of staff, know of things that aren't on the open market, they haven't been advertised for surplus land, they throw in an offer without, and the city accepts it without doing an appraisal. So, over the last month, I've had the opportunity to speak with a number of councils who, quite frankly, are shocked that we didn't require an appraisal. And I think that was a bulk of the anger out in the community, was that the process didn't look right. Not that the mayor did anything illegal. I fully agree with Mr. Fleming's report. I don't think the mayor broke any code of conduct section. I don't think the mayor violated the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I think we, as a council, have found perhaps a void in our policies and a void in what we're looking at, and Counselor Purcell, you know, pointing out that we have addressed a truck, we have addressed other surplus things. So, I think there's a bigger picture issue here that shouldn't be falling on the shoulders of the mayor. I think it's a procedural picture that certainly I would like this council to be looking at. Certainly, some of the comments, you know, that I certainly saw in the community about the mayor directly, I think were not well-placed, were not fact-based. But I think we're, I just don't want us to get away from what I think I was talking about a month ago, and what I think Counselor Purcell was talking about was the process. And in terms of the comment that you don't think anybody else would be interested in the property, I can tell you that I have met, I was sought after by another adjacent property owner, who advises that she did receive a letter from Ms. Sorial about the property, and that she is expressing an interest. I'm not saying, putting in an offer, I'm saying she's looking into it. So, I would disagree with your comment that nobody else would be interested. The other adjacent property owner is showing interest, and I think that's, I think, what shows that maybe our overall policy, again, has a bit of a void to it. But I'll leave it at that.
Counselor Jackano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to belabor it, but I did say at one of the meetings that we should have a moratorium and find out what the actual price is worth on a piece of property. I did say that. And I mean, the process prior to that was, you know, it was common knowledge that that $1,000 piece of property was sold to other individuals, not just people on council, but, you know, taxpayers within the community. So, it wasn't as though it was on some hidden agenda. And a few weeks ago, you attacked the mayor. I found you attacked the mayor personally. You said, "I could not believe that the mayor was doing this." You painted him with a brush that made him look like he was underhanded, you know, that he was creating some criminal act, and I think that's wrong. I mean, if you want to address the issue, let's address the issue, not let's attack the man. And that, you know, that's what I want to say, and I concluded with my comments. Thank you.
Counselor Keel?
Once again, Counselor Jackano, I think if you go back and watch the video, you will find that I said, "I can't believe council is doing this. I can't believe council meets in caucus and approves a land deal without having an appraisal." So, I think if you go back and you review my...
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Counselor Jackano.
I think if you review that video, I did review it, you attacked the gentleman sitting right there in that chair, you attacked the mayor. I was here. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, it's not a point of order.
Counselor Keel?
So, again, I have reviewed the video. I've watched the video several times. The video's all over Facebook. What I said was that I couldn't believe council was doing this. The mayor happens to be the third example. As you well know from sitting in that chair, I raised the issue two further times. I said it looks more egregious when it's one of us. And when it comes to councillors doing business with its own city, we need to be higher, we need to hold ourselves to a higher standard. But I said this council needs to work better.
Okay, so, we had a re-information item, and I let the conversation allowed it, which I thought was important, and I just want, if I could say something with the, if the council will let me, if you're committee, as the chair, if I could say something. This point of information, at that meeting, I made a motion to table to get the land appraised and put it for public sale, and I've spoken to the CEO, and Ms. Sorial is coming up with the policy, and Counselor Lefrenier had mentioned at that meeting that we are changing the policy. So, the motion, staff is in the process to get the land appraised, it'll be up for public sale, and then staff's also working on a new policy. And that will close this item. Next item, capital funding for escalator underdrain and grinder at Blues Control Center. CEO, Enra.
All right, so I guess we'll get into some dirty stuff here now.
I saw that.
Yeah, so this is in regards to a piece of equipment that wasn't in the budget, but it was, that was an error in regards to staff. You know, but, you know, there's so much stuff going on in budget time, so. And so, the essence of this report is that the operations department is requesting approval to reallocate a capital funds from the 2023 capital budget. So, the idea is that we would proceed with the replacement of this piece of equipment. We did take a look at rebuilding it, but it would have been too expensive. And there is, in the financial side of it, $125,000 allocated to the PCC digester floating cover replacement. We're looking that we'll not replace it, but we'll just do some repairs to it at a cost of $45,000, and then we'll have an excess of $80,000, and then we'll use that $80,000 to do the replacement of the escalator underdrain. Open up, any questions?
Do we have any questions? And then we'll also need a motion. If the committee is in favor, Counselor Lefrenier?
I would move we support the request.
Thank you. Counselor Keel, second. Motion on the floor, discussion. Those in favor, carried. That ends our Finance Administration Committee meeting. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Keel, Counselor Plummer. Those in favor, we are adjourned.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the council meeting for April 4th to order. I'd ask everyone to please stand for an opening prayer. Before opening this meeting of council, I would ask those who wish each in your own way silently join in a prayer of guidance over these proceedings. Are there any disclosures pecuniary interests this evening in respect to this council meeting? Seeing none, we have a series of minutes this evening, so entertaining a motion for the approval of the minutes of regular meeting. Oh, sorry, I skipped the, okay. Well...
I will be declaring...
Once we get to the closed session, correct?
I don't have to declare that now?
I believe we'll declare it in the close, but you can declare it now if you wish.
I will be declaring a conflict of interest with the caucus item tonight, as I am on the executive of that, of the curling center. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lefrenier. Okay, minutes, regular meeting of council, March 21st, 2023, to entertain a motion for their approval. Counselor Keel, seconded by Counselor Jackano. Those in favor, that's carried, okay. Next is Planning and Development Committee, which was March 7th, 2023. I have Counselor Plummer, seconded by Counselor Keel. Those in favor, that's carried. Next is Finance and Admin Committee, March 7th, 2023. I have the deputy mayor, seconded by Counselor Plummer. Those in favor, that's carried. Next is Receiving Minutes from Local Boards, and we have this evening, one being Pembroke Heritage Murals Committee, March 1st, 2023. I have Counselor Plummer, seconded by Counselor Lefrenier. Those in favor, carried. Proclamations, we have two this evening. The first is, by virtue of the power vested in me, I do hereby declare April 9th through the 15th of 2023 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Pembroke. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, emergency medical services, and whereas an emergency occurs, the prompt response of firefighters and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our paramedics and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Rentrou Central Ambulance Communication Center. And whereas the ambulance communications officers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with the emergency fire and paramedic services. And whereas the ambulance communications officers are the single vital link for our paramedics and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, ensuring their safety. And whereas ambulance communicator, communications officers of the Rentrou Central Ambulance Communication Centers have contributed substantially to the suppression of fires and treatment of critically ill patients in the city of Pembroke. Whereas each ambulance communications officer has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Ron Gervais, mayor of the city of Pembroke, do hereby proclaim April 9th through the 15th as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Pembroke in honor of the dedicated public servants whose diligence and professionalism keeps our citizens and city safe. Each year during the second week of April, the telecommunications personnel and the public safety community are honored. This week-long event is a time to celebrate and thank those who are dedicate, sorry, that dedicate their lives to serving the public. It is a week that should be set aside so everyone can be made aware of their hard work and their dedication. We encourage everyone to celebrate and honor these individuals for all of their sacrifices they make to create a better and safer community, province, and country for the public. These incredible men and women provide 24/7, 365 degree, 365-day service to the residents and the visitors of Renfrew County, including Pembroke, South Algonquin Township, and Algonquin Park, and are located in the town of Renfrew. The second proclamation this evening concerns Earth Day. By virtue of the power vested in me, I do hereby declare April 22nd, 2023 as Earth Day in the city of Pembroke. Whereas Earth Day Canada works with many partners to address environmental challenges through developing programs in collaboration with communities, organizations, and citizens. And whereas with urban areas, whereas with urban areas set to become home to two-thirds of the world's population by 2050, and as climate change is being observed and experienced, municipalities find themselves in the front line of the battle against climate change. And whereas under the theme of invest in our planet, Earth Day hopes to realize awareness among Canadians about eco-anxiety and the need to take action together as a cure for both ourselves and also to help care for the planet. And whereas the city of Pembroke is committed to raising environmental awareness and has taken a number of steps and actions to be part of the green revolution, such as declaring a climate emergency on April 20th, 2021, committing to the Partners for Climate Protection Five Milestone Program, and creating a Beautification and Climate Action Advisory Committee. And whereas the steps we can take to protect and preserve our natural environment through education, partnerships, and positive actions should be encouraged in the city of Pembroke. Therefore, be it resolved that I Ron Gerva, Mayor of the city of Pembroke, have the honor of proclaiming April 22nd, 2023 as Earth Day throughout Pembroke, and encourage all citizens, business, businesses, and institutions, and organizations to participate in action-oriented activities to protect and enhance the environment and our local ecology, and to celebrate the earth. As indicated, April 22nd is Earth Day. There are going to be a number of activities that citizens can engage in, and all are encouraged to participate and show their concern for the environment. Valley Earth Day Arts is celebrating Earth Day for their second year. The theme is climate matters. There will be an Earth Day parade this year on April 22nd from 2:00 to 4:00, meeting initially at the parking lot at the Pembroke Waterfront Amphitheater for greetings, and to disperse from there through the Pembroke Downtown Core, returning to the waterfront area for closing activities. As many know, the city of Pembroke has been at the forefront of addressing the environment and climate initiatives. Pembroke City Council has formed, as previously indicated, the Pembroke Beautification and Climate Action Committee with a specific mandate which promotes improvements to the appearance of the city, enhances the natural environment, and recommend actions to address climate change issues. I would be remiss if I did not mention all of the initiatives, initiatives that the city of Pembroke had engaged in and which were articulated in our Director of Operations Report in 2020. The city of Pembroke understands, cares, and wants to do its part. However, the city of Pembroke cannot do it alone. The residents and businesses must do their part. Together, we will succeed. Next, we have bylaws. The first is 2023-24, Counselor Jackano.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Plummer. That bylaw, 2023-24, being a bylaw to authorize the adoption of Amendment Number 15 to the official plan 2016 be adopted and passed, and further that the said bylaw be signed by your worship and clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation. Waiting your signature, your worship.
Moved by Counselor Jackano, seconded by Counselor Plummer, that bylaw 2023, being a bylaw to authorize the adoption of Amendment Number 15 to the official plan 2016 be adopted and passed, and further that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation. Counselor Jackano, did you wish to address it?
This was discussed previously, your worship, and adopted by the committee.
Thank you. Call the question, those in favor? And that's carried. The next bylaw is 2023-25, 231 Hink Street, Counselor Jackano.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself and seconded by the Honorable Deputy Mayor Brian Abdella, that bylaw 2023-25, being a bylaw to authorize amendment of zoning bylaw 2020-05 regarding 231 Hink Street, be adopted and passed, and further that said bylaw be signed by the mayor and the clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation, and awaiting your signature.
Moved by Counselor Jackano, seconded by Counselor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Abdella, that bylaw 2023-25, a bylaw to authorize the amendment of zoning bylaw 2020-05 regarding 231 Hinks Street, be adopted and passed, and further that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation. Counselor Jackano?
Thank you, your worship. This particular building has had quite a history. I think it was built in 1920, and the new owners are going to be developing some, some additional housing units to it. It has been a laundromat. Many years ago, there was a small convenience store there, it was called the V&amp;E Shop. You're all too young, you probably weren't even born yet, but I remember going to the memorial center as a young boy, and we'd stop there to get a chocolate bar or whatever. So there's been a lot of change along that, for that particular building, but it's good to see that people from outside our community have faith and coming here to develop, and it'll be a positive thing for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Call the question, those in favor? And that is carried. Next is bylaw 2023-26, which is 583 River Road. Counselor Keel?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Lefrenier, that bylaw 2023-26, a bylaw to authorize the amendment of zoning bylaw 2020-05 regarding 583 River Road be adopted and passed, and further that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation.
Moved by Counselor Keel, seconded by Counselor Lefrenier, that bylaw 2023-26, a bylaw to authorize the amendment of zoning bylaw 2020-05 regarding 583 River Road be adopted and passed, and further that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation. Counselor Keel?
Your worship, as discussed earlier tonight, this is a zoning bylaw to permit a duplex to be built on what is currently a vacant lot, so once again, I'll echo Counselor Jackano's thoughts that it's, it's good to be providing more units here in the city of Pembroke.
Thank you. Call the question, those in favor? Let's carry it. Next is 2023-27, 1200 Pembroke Street West, Counselor Plummer.
Thank you, worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Jackano, that bylaw 2023-27, a bylaw to authorize the amendment of zoning bylaw 2020-05 regarding 1200 Pembroke Street West be adopted and passed, and further said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation.
Moved by Counselor Plummer, seconded by Counselor Jackano, that bylaw 2023-27, a bylaw to authorize the amendment of zoning bylaw 2020-05 regarding 1200 Pembroke Street West be adopted and passed, and further that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation. Counselor Plummer?
Thank you, worship. This bylaw was discussed early in committee. It is going to permit the construction of storage units in the West End Mall to basically fill up some vacant space they're having trouble renting.
Thank you. Call the question, those in favor? That's carried. Next is 2023-28, agreement with the OVTA, Counselor Lefrenier?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Ian Keel, that bylaw 2023-28, being a bylaw to enter into an agreement with the county of Renfrew and the Ottawa Valley Tourist Association be adopted and passed, and further that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Lefrenier, seconded by Counselor Keel, that bylaw 2023-28, being a bylaw to enter into an agreement with the county of Renfrew and the Ottawa Valley Tourist Association be adopted and passed, and further that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation. Counselor Lefrenier?
Yes, this was covered in an earlier meeting. It's a renewal of an agreement that's been in place for a long time.
Thank you. Call the question, those in favor? And that is carried. Next is 2023-29, Dedicated Gas Tax Funds Agreement. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Andrew Plummer, that bylaw 2023-29, being a bylaw to authorize the entering into a letter of agreement between Her Majesty the Queen in the right of the province of Ontario, represented by the Ministry of Transportation and the city of Pembroke, on behalf of the city of Pembroke and the township of Laurentian Valley, to receive funding provided under the Dedicated Gas Tax Funds, Gas Tax Funds for the public transportation program be adopted and passed, and further that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation.
Moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Plummer, sorry, that bylaw 2023-29, being a bylaw to authorize the entering into a letter of agreement between Her Majesty the Queen in right of the province of Ontario, represented by the Ministry of Transportation and the city of Pembroke, on behalf of the city of Pembroke and township of Laurentian Valley, to receive funding provided under the Dedicated Gas Tax Funds for public transportation program be adopted and passed, and further that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, worship. This is annual gas tax we receive by the province, is, which is to be used by, for transportation services, and this year we're receiving $118,783, and it goes towards the handy bus service that we share with the Laurentian Valley, and it's a very, very important service. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Call the question, those in favor? That's carried. Next is 2023-30, Adventure Entertainment Agreement. Counselor Keel?
Point of order, your worship? Just on that last item, I do believe we should be referencing His Majesty the King, and that is included in the letter from the ministry. But I believe that is a, a technical matter that I think our procedural bylaw would allow your worship to, to simply correct.
Thank you. We will amend it before it gets signed and sent out. Great, thank you.
Your worship, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Lefrenier, that bylaw 2023-30, being a bylaw to authorize the entering into of an agreement between the consortium of municipal councils of the city of Pembroke, the township of Laurentian Valley, and the town of Petawawa, the consortium, and Adventure Entertainment to provide management services for the operation of Festival Hall be adopted and passed, and further that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Keel, seconded by Counselor Lefrenier, that bylaw 2023-30, being a bylaw to authorize the entering into of an agreement between the consortium of the municipal councils of the city of Pembroke, township of Laurentian Valley, and the town of Petawawa being the consortium, and Adventure Entertainment to provide management services for the operation of Festival Hall be adopted and passed, and further that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation. Counselor Keel?
This is just updating an agreement that the city and the, along with the other two municipalities was already engaged in, and it's just updating the, the fees provided based on a new CPI index.
Thank you. Call the question, those in favor? That is carried. That's the conclusion of the bylaws. Next is Mayor's Report. On March 30th, I had great pleasure to bring greetings on behalf of council and the beautiful city of Pembroke at the 75th Annual Pembroke Qantas Music and Dance Festival. As most know, I am past president of the Qantas Club of Pembroke and certainly most proud of that particular club. The evening had a lot of great entertainment in the areas of piano, vocal, strings, instrumental, and dance, and of course, there was much deserved awards handed out. I commend the Qantas Club, the sponsors, York TV, and the Pembroke Observer for their contributions to this great event. I noted in particular the parents, mentors, and teachers that aided in the development of these participants. Bravo to everyone. On April 1st, I attended the 2023 Renfrew County Regional Science Fair. The city of Pembroke co-sponsored this event together with CNL, Town of Deep River, OPG, Renfrew County District School Board, and the Legion. I'm happy to announce that we are in great hands with the generations, this generation of youth. The projects were outstanding, and I was most proud to represent Pembroke there. With the onset of spring, I wish to remind everyone to stay away from the rivers and streams. I would ask that people consider their own safety and consider having a 72-hour emergency kit, and the, as discussed by the chief earlier this evening, the first jet meetings have started with the Emergency Management Committee, and that is ongoing. Easter long weekend is soon upon us, and I want to extend a warm, happy Easter to each and every one of the residents of the city of Pembroke. I hope that the extra long weekend affords you some quality time with loved ones, and that you do not eat too much turkey or ham. As always, stay safe and be kind to one another. Next, we have number eight, notices of motion. Counselor Purcell?
At the next regular meeting of municipal council, I will be moving that the municipality issue a request for proposal for the provision of legal services, since it's been about 21 years since that contract has been awarded. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other notices of motion? Okay, thank you. Counselor Updates. Counselor Keel?
Thank you, your worship. Last, last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Senior and Elected Officials Workshop on Emergency Management. Chief Sell was also there. It was a very, a very interesting but also somber type of event, and I know from speaking with Chief Sell and, and knowing who our emergency teams are and our emergency committees are, that the residents of the city of Pembroke should have full faith in our emergency services here in the city of Pembroke. I was also, I also last week attended a meeting of the Festival Hall Consortium with representatives from the town of Petawawa and the township of Laurentian Valley. I can advise council that a new floor is going in at the front of the stage. This is happening, I think, as, as we sit here tonight, so that will be a great, a great further addition, and of course, we just had the new seats put in last fall, so there's a lot of great things happening at Festival Hall, including this month, where we have the Pembroke Symphony Orchestra, and also Ron James, a comedian, coming in, so that's this month's lineup, and I certainly encourage everyone to attend our Festival Hall and all the events that get put on there. And I would be remiss if I didn't wish everyone here on this council and all of our staff and the residents of the city of Pembroke a happy upcoming Easter.
Thank you. Counselor Lefrenier?
So I have a couple of reports. One is on behalf of Counselor Jackno and myself. We sit on the planning committee for the upcoming civic awards and youth awards, and I'm just urging everyone to nominate someone. There's several categories, both in the civic awards and the youth awards. Nomination forms have been sent out to all the high schools. Individuals can pick up nomination forms here at City Hall, at the library, at the rec. office in the PMC, or they can print them off online on our city website. And I really want individuals to, to think about, the last three years, we've been through a lot of hardship, and maybe there's someone you wouldn't normally think would qualify for an award, but you know, there's so many Good Samaritan Awards, and there's people that have been reaching out to others during the pandemic that really made a difference in our community, so I urge everyone around this table or anyone who's listening to think about somebody and definitely pick up a nomination. Nominations end April 24th at midnight. The event's taking place in June, so please nominate someone. I had the pleasure of attending on behalf of the mayor. I was going anyway, so he said, would you please represent me? And Counsel, Deputy Mayor was also there. It was also there. It was the, uh, the ending of the one-fifty celebrations at the Pembroke Curling, uh, Center, and that was on March twenty-fifth. It was an evening of food, fellowship, and entertainment, and boy, were we entertained. Um, Gillan Roots, Gail Gavin, and Dennis Harrington took us on a musical storytelling journey through a hundred and fifty years of history of the Ottawa Valley, and, and the culture, and how the Pembroke Curling Center was a big part of our culture. Um, it, they went back from when we used to curl on the river, and then, uh, several different locations through the city, uh, some of which were victim to fire, and it was really entertaining, and it was really nice to see some old pictures. Um, I played the spoons. I love that. I haven't done that since I was a young'un in Cape Breton, and, um, it was a beautiful evening, and on behalf of, uh, the almost three hundred members of the Pembroke Curling Center, I want to thank, uh, the mayor and deputy mayor, and I know councillor Keel was there during the Ontario Winter Games, anyone who's supported the Curling Center over the years, and happy one-fiftieth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jackinow?
Your worship, uh, I did take the, uh, uh, the opportunity to mail all, email all of council an invitation to a, uh, gala auction, which is taking place on the fifteenth of April at the Germania Club, and the purpose of that is to raise money for the St. Joseph's Food Bank. Barbara Blackstein has donated a bulk of her life's work in art to be auctioned off. There's some beautiful pieces there, and as councillor Lefrenier said, it speaks to the history of our community, from Hughley's Berry Farm to, uh, churches, uh, you know, from maple sugar, uh, horse drawing competitions, et cetera. So you're all invited. The admission is awful. It's free, so, uh, not too many things you get free, uh, these days except advice from your wife, which I had some today, but I, I've taken it to heart. Anyway, you're invited to come, the public, please come. It starts at, uh, three-thirty. There's a silent auction and a live auction with some celebrity auctioneers. You'll have a ball, and it'll support a great cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I have a few items tonight, your worship and council. Well, first of all, I want to, uh, thank councillor Lefrenier, he's vice president of the Curling Club, and that was such a great night, and I, I ended up sitting in, in the second row, and I took all those videos, and I'm taking a video, and Gail Gavin is there, and all of a sudden, and I've known Gail for years, councillor Lefrenier comes up and starts playing the spoons, and my wife says, what's going on here? Where'd she learn how to do that? And then I knew that you play in the kitchen in Cape Breton, so maybe someday you can give us a show at council table, but it's on Facebook. It's on my Facebook page, and, uh, you got, we got a really good video of you, and that was so good to see, and it makes you so proud of the, uh, area, the Curling Club, and, and, uh, it was such a great show, and, uh, we want to congratulate the Pembroke Curling Club for all that you do for the community. Um, the second one is on behalf of councillor Lefrenier, and I, I was at the, uh, hockey game a while ago, and I, I ran into, uh, one of the administrators at the SPCA, and she invited me out to their, she phoned me up a few weeks later, and so my wife and I went out on, uh, March twenty-fifth to the SPCA, uh, Spainerda Clinic at, uh, Shady Nook, and I'd never been to one, got a tour, uh, very well-run, uh, they're full of capacity, and this leads into the, the committee that you and I are working on with, uh, Ms. Heidi Martin for the feral cat issue in Pembroke, which we'll, we'll be addressing later on this year. So, um, kudos to the SPCA, and we'll be working with them, so I encourage anyone to go and get a tour, and, uh, it's a, a very good, uh, organization, and we're partnering with them on, working on the feral cat issue. The next one is on behalf of the, the mayor and I. Uh, last night, we had a community watch meeting. We had full capacity at the, uh, fire station, uh, very good turnout, and we want to thank the PBA for coming, Bethia Summers, and, uh, and Matthew from the PBA gave a presentation. That's gonna be our next community watch zone is, is downtown here. Our next meeting is on October second. We're gonna meet twice a year now, but we'll be having meetings in between if we need them, and if anybody wants to establish a neighborhood watch zone, contact the mayor, I, or Steve Valpenny. Um, that leads into more PBA news. We have the Community Expo coming up on the twelfth and thirteenth of, uh, May. Uh, if anybody wants to take out a booth, uh, they can contact Bethia Summers at the PBA office. That's a really growing event. It's in conjunction with the PBA and the city of Pembroke and Eco Pembroke, and, um, we will have a community watch, uh, booth there, along with our community garden, uh, booth, and the police services board will be there also. Uh, we'll be in the corner like last year together, one big happy family, and, uh, we'll be, we'll hopefully we'll be selling rain barrels. I'm waiting on confirmation from the rain barrel dot C A group. People keep asking me about that. As soon as I find out, I'll let you know, and, um, so we'll be there, and we are looking for volunteers for the Pembroke Care for Community Garden, uh, for the food bank gardens we have, the big garden and the three, uh, plots that we donate food to the food bank, and general, so if anybody out there wants to volunteer, contact myself or Mayor Gervais. Thank you, your worship.
Councillor Plummer?
Thank you, worship. Uh, just one, uh, thing to add. On March twenty-ninth, I attended the Senior Elected Officials Workshop on Emergency Management with, uh, Chief Sell. Uh, some underst, uh, highlights of the thing was, uh, the event was to understand the basic level of municipal requirements of the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act, as well as clarify the role of elected officials within the context of a local emergency. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, councillor Plummer, I believe you have a motion in respect to closed session.
I do. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Jackinow, that the meeting become a closed meeting to discuss the personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employee, section two-three-nine-two B of the Municipal Act, including financial information related to a corporation.
Thank you. Uh, call the question those in favor of that motion, and it's carried. Um, we will now move into a closed session.